Okay, let's call this meeting to order. Go ahead and start with the flag salute, please stand. Oh, where is it? Oh.
Hey, you moved?
I've moved. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Howgie?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Woodward?
Here.
Mr. Dematte?
Here.
Mr. Herzog?
Here.
Okay, welcome everyone. Today's planning commission meeting is open to in-person attendance and may also be observed online through the Plaster County website. In an effort to encourage the public to engage in the process, our public comment for this meeting will be offered in person and through remote virtual process. Citizens who wish to comment virtually today should be prepared to comment via the Zoom platform. To join online, click on the link on the Planning Commission homepage. Be sure your microphone is muted. You may also call in using your toll-free number. And that number is 888-788-0099. Or you can call 877-853-5247. And please enter the webinar ID number, which is 836-9486-5277. Please press star six to mute yourself. If you would like to make public comment virtually, please raise your hand with the hand icon at the bottom of the page. If you're calling in, please press star nine to raise your hand. Please be prepared to speak at the time I open public comment for the specific item you would like to address, which may include public comment for matters not on the agenda, a consent item, or a timed item. If attending in person today, we kindly request that once you have commented on your item, return to your seat or leave through the hearing exit door to accommodate for physical distancing and allow for others to provide in-person comment. Each commenter is entitled to three minutes. Thank you for your patience as we work to preserve the safety and health of all meeting participants and assure that each citizen who wishes to comment has the opportunity to do so. At this time, I would ask the Plenary Director to report.
Thank you Chairman, members of the commission. Real quick, Chairman, I want to clarify the web ID number. I provided you with the incorrect web ID number, so my mistake. So that web ID number is 819-7152-4079. Once again, 819-7152-4079.
Is it correct on the website?
Yes. It was just your, it was just the note that you had.
Okay.
So, thank you. And then I'll, yeah, start with my report. First, just reporting out on Board of Supervisors meeting passed and upcoming. There was a board meeting, a special board meeting on April 5th. There were budget presentations from the county departments for the fiscal year 2022/23 budget. So those were just the initial department requests. The board's actually going to take up the budget and its adoption at two upcoming board meetings on June 14th and June 28th. And then next week, which is the next board meeting, April 19th, we have several planning items going forward, which I've mentioned before, the Ridge subdivision, which is a general plan amendment up next to the Bickford project, the emergency shelter CUP modification that will allow the extension of that permit for another five years. And then also the base-to-base gondola, which extends the construction season. Any questions on those? Also on the agenda, April 19th, the board will be considering two appointments to this planning commission. The one you're all aware of is the at-large seat for the Eastern Sierra Crest. That one, there'll be an appointment made on Tuesday for that. And then we did hear from Commissioner Sam Cannon that he regrettably has submitted a resignation for personal reasons. And so I want to wish him well. I also want to thank him for his service on this commission while he was here. So that's the District One seat, and that appointment or reappointment for that seat will be on the agenda as well next week. Any comments? Okay. And then May 10th, looking out a month ahead, the housing-related code amendments workshop. That is scheduled on that date. And that's just for workshop. The board is not going to be asked to take any action. I just provide direction of staff at that meeting. Any questions?
EJ, a couple, real quick, if it's okay. The, I understood that the community was going to appeal the Bayside decision. Do you know if that has happened?
So we did receive an appeal on that project. I don't know if we have a tentative date when that will go to the board.
Yeah, it's fine.
But it's probably about 60 days out, and the appeal was filed. Thanks for bringing that up. That was not on my list, so it's important.
No, no problem. Now, just a comment, if you don't mind. This is for, really for public, I guess, public consumption. And just to get it on the record. I am continuing to be concerned a little bit about a code rewrite that's going to take place or that is taking place as we speak, associated with mixed use in multifamily. It's associated with the housing element. It's associated with streamlining, et cetera, et cetera, all those words that go along with it. And I continue to be a little bit concerned about the rumors that I'm hearing about the way this is going to proceed. So for everybody's, to get it on the public record, I did ask for a meeting with the CEO on this because that is the individual who actually could resolve this problem without question, I think, ahead of time. And that meeting was acknowledged by, or meeting request was acknowledged by his office. However, I haven't heard from them. And I basically indicated that this would be the time, this Thursday would be the time which it would need to take place or prior to that. Since that has not happened, I now withdraw that request for a meeting, and I will not meet with him. I do offer the same request to the lead attorney in county council office. So if there's an interest in meeting with me on this, I would suggest that it be done. I would love to have it happen. I'm going to be gone for eight days, leaving this evening. But if we can do that when I get back, that would be great. And if not, that's okay as well. But it would be a good idea to me. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to upcoming planning commission schedule. So we do have a meeting scheduled for April 28th, two weeks from now. On that agenda right now, the Granite Bay Medical Office project down on the corner of Berg and Douglas Boulevard in Granite Bay. That's a general plan amendment. That will be up for your consideration on the 28th. And then we also have an appeal of a signed variance also in Granite Bay at the next meeting. The May 12th meeting, agenda yet to be determined, so I can't confirm whether or not, you know, we'll have that meeting or what will be on that agenda if we do. So stay tuned. And then the staffing update. The county has hired a new Community Development and Resource Agency Director, just as of last Friday. The gentleman's name is David Quong. He is currently the Community Development Director for San Joaquin County. And I believe he's also worked in the past for the city of Sacramento in different capacities, but also as a planning director. So the start date for Mr. Quong is June 7th. So we're still about a month out. In the interim, Jane Christensen, who has been acting as interim agency director, will continue until that time. So it's good news. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and open up public comment for any matters not on the planning commission agenda. Anyone here wish to comment on non-agenda items? Anyone online? Did you try to wait? There's a little bit of delay for online. Let me make sure I wait. Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment for items not on the agenda. We'll move on to consent agenda. Would any commissioners like to remove any items from consent agenda?
I'll remove item B from the consent agenda, please.
Okay, we'll pull item B from consent, leave item A. I'm going to ask the public if they'd like to remove any consent agenda items. Anyone here in person? Anyone online? Okay, we'll.
Okay, I'll move to approve the consent item.
Second.
We got a first and a second. Let's take a roll call vote on item A and consent.
Mr. Howgie?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Dematte?
Yes.
Mr. Herzog?
Yes.
Okay, let's go ahead and move to our consent agenda item B presentation from staff. And so Steve?
Yeah, real quick, well, before Steve gets started, maybe our IT folks can jump to the Plumpjack PowerPoint slide. I don't have an exact number, but I think they'll be able to find it for us. We can give them just a minute. If they're listening. There we go. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr., and good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission. I'm Steve Bionda, supervising planner out of the Tahoe office. And today, I bring before you the Plumpjack-in redevelopment project, a request from the applicant for an extension of time on this project. Just to help orient you to where this project is located, it is situated at the northwest intersection of Olympic Valley Road and Shirley Canyon Road, towards the west end of Olympic Valley. The subject property itself is shown on the screen on the zoning slide in the hash marks. This particular property was actually developed in 1959 in preparation for the Olympics. And the current site improvements include a 61-room hotel, surface parking, restaurant, and related functions. Just for orientation purposes, to the north, the area identified, the subject property itself is a zoned village commercial. To the north of the subject property that's shown in the hash marks, in the Conservation Preserve Zone District is where Squaw Creek is located. Immediately to the east and across the roadway is the Village at Palisades. To the south of the subject property is the Squaw Valley Lodge property. And the area shown to the west is zoned high-density residential and also contains the Tramp Condos property. Back in 2017, your planning commission approved a vesting tentative map and subdivision that allowed for the demolition of the existing structures on the property, including the surface parking. And in its place would be replaced with an underground parking structure. And above ground would be three separate buildings. The underground parking area was all interconnected. Contained within these buildings, your approval allowed for a 60 hotel room and 34 residential units, which would be dispersed amongst all three of the structures. The eastern structure is where the hotel itself was, is intended to be located. As I mentioned, February 2017, your planning commissioner approved the vesting tentative map and conditional use permit. Accompanying that proposal was an environmental document prepared for the project, which was determined to be adequate by your planning commission. Then in May of 2018, the applicant had proposed a modification to the previous, or to the approved entitlement, which essentially resulted in very minimal exterior changes. For the most part, the structures were going to remain the same. It was more the internal use of the structures. At that point, they were considering what they called a reprogramming of the interior of the site, which would cause for a slight shift from some of the tourist uses to more residential uses at that time. About that same time, the floodplain mapping for the area was updated by FEMA, which created some design concerns for the applicant team. And the application was placed on hold and later withdrawn. Then in April of 2020, your planning commission approved a two-year extension of time for this project, which established a new expiration date of February 23rd, 2022. Then in January, on January 12th of 2022, prior to the expiration date for the project, the applicant filed a timely appeal, or, sorry, a timely request for an extension of time to extend the expiration date of the project. Similar to the previous extension of time request, there's a number of findings that are required for your planning commission to make, to approve the extension of time. Some of those include that there are no changes in circumstances that have occurred that would have impacted your planning commission's original approval of the project in 2017. Additionally, your planning commission will be asked to make the finding that the applicant has been diligent in their pursuit of the implementation of this project. Staff has reviewed the applicant's request for an extension of time, and staff does believe that the planning commission can in fact make those findings. Speaking to the diligent pursuit of the project, the applicant continues to evaluate design revisions or modifications that can address the floodproofing of the underground parking structure that was impacted by the remapping of the floodplain. At the same time, the applicant is also pursuing obtaining capital to secure the financing that would allow the project to move forward. So with all that, staff's recommendation is that the planning commission approve the two-year extension of time request for the Plumpjack-in vesting tentative map and conditional use permit, PLN 14-0047, in reliance on the previously certified environmental impact report and modified conditions of approval as recommended by staff and as well as based on the findings contained in the staff report. Speaking to the modified conditions that are contained within your staff report, there is one item, condition number 107, that needs to be modified. Your staff, or your planning commission packet indicates an expiration date of February 23rd, 2025. That should be consistent with the two-year extension of time request that's before you. So it should read February 23rd, 2024. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, should you have any. I do believe the applicant is also on the line and available to answer any question, should you have any.
All right, thanks, Steve. Questions from commissioners for staff?
Yeah. I think we'll have some.
Okay, I'd like to provide an opportunity for the applicant, Hayes.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Hi, good day, commissioners. My name is Hayes Parsley-Bach. I am with Principal with Paradigm VIII. We are in partnership with the Plumpjack Group and CNCML, the property owner, on this project and have been working on it since 2018. Actually, 2017, excuse me. How the years go by. I wanted to sort of reiterate what Steve mentioned. As you can all probably appreciate, the floodplain change in, while we were going through a potential modification process, was a substantial, you know, item relative to making sure that we could meet the building code to do that with a subterranean garage as the project was approved. And we believe that that is, you know, feasible and relatively straightforward to design through. We, you know, just as we got the first extension, we were in a position to sort of move the project forward, you know, quickly and pick up the improvement plan process where we had left that off with Plaster County. As everyone knows, we sort of had done that, and then immediately after receiving the, or basically concurrent with receiving that first extension, you know, ran into all of the challenges on the project relative to COVID, including, as you can appreciate with a complex project like this, getting design teams together in the summer of 2020 and fall of 2020 to the site to coordinate, you know, design modifications and things like that to address those complexities was not feasible. And so we've continued to do work on the project remotely. We're starting to get to a place where folks are comfortable, you know, reconvening on the site. We also have had a lot of good progress in the last six months relative to the investment and capital stack needed for the project to move forward towards construction. And so we are excited about hopefully getting this extension and being in a position to move the project forward towards execution. And I'm happy to, you know, stay on and answer any questions you may have. And also, we've got Project Council on as well, if needed.
All right, thank you, Hayes. Any questions for the applicant? We can move for public comment, too. Okay, let's go ahead and move to public comment. Anyone here in person wish to speak on this item? Anyone online? Not seeing anyone in the public wanting to speak. We'll close public comment and bring it to commissioners for questions or clarification or discussion. Does anyone have any questions?
I do have a question. Okay, I guess if I remember right, when this project was first approved by the planning commission, it was also appealed to the supervisors. But I was aware that it, or not aware, if it was gone beyond that to the court system or not. Was this involved in the court?
No, no, it was not subject to litigation.
Okay, and so it is really separate than the litigation that's discussed in the letter that we received?
Yeah, the litigation mentioned in the letter received is pertaining to a different project in the region or in the vicinity.
Okay, thank you.
No? Okay. We can move, we can move to a motion, if you guys have clarity.
I'll make a motion to extend for two years the request of the Plumpjack-in vesting tentative map and conditional use permit, PLN 1400047, in reliance on the previously certified environmental impact report and modified conditions of approval as recommended by staff and modified today based on the findings contained in the staff report.
Okay.
Do we have to modify 107 to 24 months and to 2024? Included in this, or should it be a subject, separate?
All one motion is Commissioner Howgie presented it.
Yeah, I think Mr. Howgie covered it.
That includes it.
I'm deaf today.
Thank you. Now it works.
Thanks. I'll second that, though.
We have a first, the second, let's do a roll call vote.
We have a first from Mr. Howgie and a second from Mr. Dematte. Mr. Howgie?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Dematte?
Yes.
Mr. Herzog?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to our first timed item, Winchester Lot 35 and Open Space Lot X, conditional use permit, subdivision modification. Members of the public may now raise their hand. Press star nine if you're calling in to begin queuing in for public comment on this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. Chris Schmidt is presenting on this item.
Sorry, Chris, I could have asked them to go back.
There we go. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Chris Schmidt, the Planning Services Division. The project I'm bringing forward to you today is a conditional use permit modification for the Winchester Plan Residential Development in Meadow Vista. Project site, it only involves one lot. It's one of the cottage lots in Winchester. The zoning is residential agriculture, minimum building site of five acre. But it does have a planned residential development, combining district of .39 units per acre. It's located at the corner of Legends Drive and Lodgeview Drive, across the street from the community's clubhouse and pool. Couple photos of the site. It's a highly constrained property. If you've driven from Winchester, many of the lots are highly constrained. A lot of outcroppings, a lot of slope. These cottage lots, there's very small buildable areas. And on this lot particularly is a significant boulder, kind of in the middle of the lot. You can see there are cottage lots developed adjacent to this. This is one of the last cottage lots that hasn't been built upon. In the background is the golf course clubhouse. Couple more pictures of the rock. The back of the property is highly sloped, so the house would be built closer to the street like most of the cottage lots out here. The applicant is a potential buyer of the property, is proposing a single-story 1700 square foot house designed to work around the boulder instead of trying to remove it. So a little history about Winchester. The project was approved back in 1993 for 409 units, including 385 single-family lots. Those are the large custom home lots. And then the 24 cluster home lots closest to the clubhouse, these are smaller, .1 acre to about a quarter acre for smaller homes. There's the 1800 golf course, the clubhouse, this women tennis club. There's an eight-acre public park and 10 miles of public trail throughout the property. The subject site is really at the center of the community. So when the project was approved, there was an open space lot called Lot X, which was set aside because it was deemed unbuildable. So on the final map, Lot X is labeled open space. Back in 2002, there were a bunch of minor boundary line adjustments on the cottage lots. For some unknown reason, Lot 35, which was a residential lot, and resultant, or common lot X, south of it, there was an adjustment made on these lots. So the open space lot X actually grew a little bit by 1800 square feet. Strangely enough, the rock outcropping stayed on Lot 35, so no adjustment to avoid that rock. So it's unclear why this minor boundary line adjustment was done, but it was recorded back in 2002. So in 2015, the owner of the common area lot, which was the homeowners association, they agreed to sell this to the golf course owner. The golf course owner also, when they purchased the property, purchased the vacant residential lots in the community and they were developing and also selling them off to individual buyers. So the original CCNRs for the project do list Lot X as common area. And it says it was unbuildable property between cottage lots 35 and 36. So the HOA, the members of the community did agree to sell the property in a vote. They sold Lot X to the golf course developer in 2015 and later removed any mention of Lot X from their CCNRs. And those CCNRs were rewritten in 2021. Last year, the applicant applied for a merger between Lot X and Lot 35 to create a .36 acre residential lot that was approved and recorded end of, end of last year. Unbeknownst to us at the county, Unbeknownst to us at the county, uh, but discovered by the title company was this language in the, um, the transfer document when the community was developed between the developer and the HOA, and it transferred all the common area and preserved lots to the HOA, but had a clause in here that said, if it's, if the property is no longer needed as protected preserve or open space, a document must be recorded and it must be signed by the county executive officer or the chairman of the board of supervisors, which confirms that Placer County no longer imposes any restriction on the property restricted as a protected reserve. That's what we're here to do today. So we did look to see if this common area lot was part of the required open space for planned residential, residential development in Winchester. So back when this was approved, our rules were a little bit less stringent than required today. So if you do PD today, at least 20% open space is required. Back when this was approved, it was only 12 and a half percent. So they needed 139, 139 acres of open space and the project set aside 335 acres of open space, but that does include 228 acres of course, golf course property. There's nothing in the conditions of approval that mentioned Lot X. It's not listed in, in the preserve system, and even if it was included in this 335 acres, they're well above the open space required for the project. There's nothing, there's nothing recorded on the property that said this is restricted as open space, and there's no restrictions listed in the conditions of approval. So with that, I'm here before you to ask you to approve the subdivision modification subject to the modified conditions of approval, which is attachment B of the staff report and findings included in the staff report. Approve the conditional use permit modification for the Winchester plan unit development subject to the modified conditions. To note that Lot X is no longer restricted as open space, subject to the findings, and also recommend the county executive officer sign a letter of determination to document abolishment of any previous open space restrictions on Lot X. And I do have one change similar to the previous item. So condition number one on the first page, it does mention a March 28th, 2022 planning commission date. This was scheduled to go at the last meeting, but we did have some scheduling, uh, problems or noticing problems. So we did have to, uh, delay that to today's date, so that needs to be updated to April With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Commissioners, question for staff?
Good morning. My name's Les Carter. I, I hope the, uh, commission can hear me well. Um, I really don't have anything to add. I believe Mr. Schmidt has covered all of the, uh, has addressed all of the specific findings or considerations. I do appreciate the, um, commission's consideration for approval of this, uh, item, uh, but I, I am here to answer any specific questions the commission may have.
Thank you, Lester. Uh, do we have any questions for the applicant? Okay, stand by, we might have some.
Hmm-hmm.
We'll go ahead and open up public comment. Is anyone here in person to speak on this item? All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the commissioners for clarification for staff, applicant, or discussion.
Has there been any feedback from neighbors on either side of the lot that they don't want this done or any?
No, I, I haven't gotten any emails or calls regarding this project, and I believe the applicant has talked to some of the immediate neighbors and no one had any issues with this. Even the HOA hasn't commented, which they're really active, and there's been nothing in silence.
So then this whole lot would become his residential pad to build his house?
Yeah, so it'll build, it's in the yellow area, that'll be the buildable area. The balance of the site is deeply sloped, you can see from the picture how it slopes, slopes down in the rear.
That's all I have.
Motion. I'll make a motion to approve the subdivision modification subject to the modified conditions of approval, attachment B, and as modified today at the meeting and findings included in the staff report.
I second that.
First and the second, let's do roll call vote.
I have a first from Mr. Haughey and a second from Mr. Demeté. Mr. Haughey?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Demeté?
Yes.
Mr. Herzog?
Yes.
I move to approve the conditional use permit modification for the Winchester plan unit development, subject to the modified conditions of approval, attachment B, and as modified today. To note that the Lot X is no longer restricted as open space and subject to the findings included in the staff report.
Second.
First and the second, roll call vote.
I have a first from Mr. Haughey and a second from Mr. Demeté. Mr. Haughey?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Demeté?
Yes.
Mr. Herzog?
Yes.
And finally, um, recommend the county executive officer sign a letter of determination to document abolishment of any previous open space restrictions on Lot X.
Second.
First and the second, roll call vote.
First from Mr. Haughey and a second from Mr. Demeté. Mr. Haughey?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Demeté?
Yes.
Mr. Herzog?
Yes. All right, we're going to move on to our second timed item, saying Sterling Point Estates subdivision map modification. Members of the public may now raise their hands, press star nine if you're calling in to begin queuing in for public comment on this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. Callie Kedinger Cecil, senior planner, will be presenting on this item.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Callie Kedinger Cecil, senior planner of the Planning Services Division. The item before you this morning is a request to modify the subdivision map for the Sterling Points Estates Homeowners Association for Lot 19 in order to eliminate an open space and riparian protection easement, redesignate the easement as a drainage easement, and modify the size. Project site is located within the Sterling Points Estates subdivision, which is located east of Folsom Lake and west of Auburn Folsom Road. Here we have the Sterling Points Estates final map and an aerial. The lot in question is shown here in red. The Sterling Points Estates subdivision was approved by the Board of Supervisors in 1990 and includes 60 residential lots on 157 acres. 14 of those lots were created with open space riparian protection easements, and the final map includes a note. I'm going to read that note so that everyone understands what those restrictions are. The final map states that an easement for the protection of Folsom Lake water quality and native oak woodlands over and across those areas designated hereon as scenic setback and natural area easements, and an easement for the protection of wetlands and endangered elderberry beetle habitat over and across those areas designated hereon as open space and riparian easements. Notification to all future lot owners that no homeowner or tenant shall place any fill materials, lawn clippings, oil, chemicals, or trash of any kind within the open space and riparian protection easement, and seen except back in natural area easements, nor shall any grading, vegetation removal, or alteration be permitted in these areas, including domestic landscaping and fencing, except fencing or other activities approved elsewhere in the conditions of approval. A provision for the enforcement of the restriction by the homeowners association shall be provided. Trimming or other maintenance activities are allowed only for the purpose of fire prevention, elimination of deceased growth, or thinning necessary for the maintenance of natural vegetation, and only with the written consent of the DRC. The DRC is the county's Development Review Committee. The, uh, so shown here is a, uh, selection of the Sterling Points Estates final map. Shown here in red is the open space riparian easement that is in question. This easement affects three lots, including Lot 18, Lot 19, and Lot 21. The majority of the open space lot is on Lot 19. The 1.4 acre site is located at 9700 Rim Rock Circle in Loomis and is owned residential agriculture with a combining minimum building site of 4.6 acres and a planned development of point four four dwelling units per acre. The site is developed with a single family residence, driveway, and landscaping. So the property owners are requesting approval of a map modification in order to change the designation of this easement from open space and riparian protection to a drainage easement for the portion of the easement that affects their property. They are also proposing to modify the width of the easement such that it would be reduced from 75 feet on their lot to 10 feet. The portions of the easements that are on the adjacent parcels would not be affected. So for some background on this particular project, uh, in April of last year, the county received a co-complaint violation for unpermitted grading activities within the easement. The, uh, complaint noted that the area had been widened, filled with weed barrier fabric, and lined with landscape rock. Raised planer beds and a concrete pathway were constructed in the easement area. This photo shows the disturbance within the easement area. In April, um, on April 21st, the county sent a notice of violation to the property owners, notifying them that a grade, that a grading permit would have been required and work within the easement continued after the notice of violation was received. On May 4th of last year, a second notice of violation was sent and requested a grading permit be submitted to the county by May 21st. On August 11th, staff met with the property owners to discuss a resolution to the code enforcement complaint, and there were two potential resolutions, including restoring the site to pre-disturbed conditions, or submitting an application and supporting information to request a modification to the Sterling Points Estates subdivision map. On October 6th, an application for a map modification was submitted. So there are two other lots within the subdivision that have approved, uh, modifications to their easement area, including Lots 17 and Lots 56. Here we have Lot 17. They submitted a request to modify the easement in 2002 and submitted a biological assessment which just, which determined that the wetland was no longer functioning as a wetland, but did function as a drainage feature. They were required to dedicate a 10-foot drainage easement to the homeowners association, and the modification was approved July 25th, 2002. So they pulled a building permit for this pool in November 24th, uh, 2004, after the modification had been approved. We also have Lot 56. Um, here we have the easement area. Again, a biological assessment was submitted that determined that the easement area was no longer supporting wetlands, but did function as a drainage feature. The modification was approved on December 11th, 2003, and a meandering drainage easement was required to be dedicated to the county. Grading permit was issued on August 25th, 2004. It's a little difficult to see, um, but what these property owners did after the, um, modification was approved is they did some grading and some extensive landscaping through here. The tree cover hides it, but they did do some work here. So Lot 19 is proposing a modification in order to redesignate the property. In support of that, um, the applicants provided a biological resources assessment, a channel analysis, and grading plans. The biological report determined that the wetland area was 0.09 acres and had been expanded to 0.024 acres with the disturbed area. And the bio report noted that there was no, uh, understory vegetation or special status species, and there was no suitable habitat on site for special status species. The project description that was submitted with the request alleges that because there is no habitat, nor are there any special status species, that the, uh, area is no longer functioning as a wetland, nor providing, um, biological benefit, and therefore should be changed to a drainage easement, and the size of the easement should be reduced. A channel analysis that was prepared for this project determined that the existing channel would actually need to be, uh, widened to six feet and excavated to a depth of two feet in order to adequately convey flows. Before there was disturbance in here, the, uh, stormwater entered here at the southeast corner and sheet flowed across the site. The size of the easement, as well as the vegetation, allowed natural filtration of stormwater. Here we have photos of the site. This is, uh, pre-disturbance and this is post-disturbance. You can tell it's the same location because we have the solar panels back here. Uh, there was blackberry bushes and some cattails, and here we can see that the area slopes. Again, it slopes. This area is lower than all of the land that is surrounding it. These photos are closer down the easement. This is Lake Forest Drive right here. Um, Lake Forest Drive is over here. Here we have the same tree, so we know it's the same location. We have cattails, and those cattails have been removed, and landscaping has been installed within the easement area. So staff considered, uh, all of the information that was provided, and staff determined that the, um, that the information provided did not support the request. So staff is recommending denial of the modification for the following reasons. The first is that elimination of resources is not justification for removal of resource protection. The second is that the easement limitations were noted on the final map, the development notebook for Lot 19, within the conditions of approval, and the CCNRs. The property owners continued ground disturbance within the easement after receiving a notice of violation. As noted in the staff report, the disturbance to the easement without the necessary permits is inconsistent with the Placer County general plan, the Horseshoe Bar Penren Community Plan, the Placer County zoning ordinance, and the grading ordinance. Where modifications have been authorized, approval was sought prior to ground disturbance. If there are properties within the subdivision that have changed their drainage without permits, they may be expected to go through a similar process. So with that, staff is recommending that your commission deny the modification request as supported by the findings contained in the staff report. I'm available for any questions you may have, and before I conclude my presentation, I do want to note that we received one comment letter, uh, from the property owner to the south in opposition to the map modification request, and you guys should have received that letter prior to today's hearing. And with that, I conclude my presentation, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Callie. We'll go ahead and open it up. Questions for commissioners?
Just a real quick question. The wetland area expanded, how did that happen? What was the biolog- analysis of that that it would expand?
Hmm-hmm, um, that, that happened when the, uh, grading occurred to the channel, so I'll go back to one of the slides. So the open space riparian protection area encompasses a pretty large area, and then within that, there's a channel. And when that was disturbed, that actually, uh, widened it a little bit.
Okay, that helpful? Thank you.
Was this area fenced?
No.
Before? It is now, though?
Uh, there is fencing there now, yes.
Around the easement area?
It's around the, the property boundaries. There was a condition of approval of the subdivision that, um, post and cable fencing was supposed to be placed around all of the wetland protection easements. It's not clear if that fencing was in place. It's not in any of the photos that I've, um, seen of the site, so I don't know if the post and cable fencing was ever actually, um, installed around this wetland area, but there's perimeter fencing.
Okay, and the photograph's a little bit confusing because, uh, the fencing crosses the drainage and it's on the side, too. And so that kind of gives you the impression that maybe...
You mean this one here?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, um, this fencing was installed without written consent of the DRC, as noted in the, um, final map note. Um, any landscaping or fencing, um, is not supposed to occur there, so that, that fence was installed without benefit of, of county purview.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Woodward?
Just one quick question. Could you go to 28? And I may actually not have a question here, I just want to look at the slide one more time here. So, right, the biological resources assessment is a product of the applicant? In other words, they went under contract to, to get this assessment done? Is that how that happened?
Yes, that's correct, and that's consistent with how the other two properties provided their assessments.
Right, okay. So we, the county differs with, the project description alleges that because there is no wetland habitat, designation should be changed. You differ from that principally because the reason that there is no wetland habitat is that the site has been disturbed, eliminating the wetland habitat. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Uh, question. The, the packet that we got afterwards with the pictures of the backhoe, is that in the drainage easement area or is that on not?
I believe that is within the drainage easement area. That photo was provided by the public comment. That photo was provided by the public comment. I can't, I mean, I'm pretty sure it's within the easement area.
And that fence was put up, I'm assuming, by the property owner, and then all this work was done in an area that we're seeing that was not supposed to happen but kind of wiped out the wetland area. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Kelly. We'll go ahead and open up to Chris Cox with Bee Green Legal on behalf of the property owners, Scott and Belinda Zhang.
Chairman, if I could interrupt. I know the applicant had a PowerPoint.
Yes.
Are you going to rely on that PowerPoint today? Because if you are, we need, probably need to take a five-minute recess just so we can get that. We're having difficulties getting it uploaded right now.
Okay.
But I'll leave that up to the chairman, whether you want to take a recess now while we do that, or if he wants to get started.
Oh, yeah, we'll take a recess, so you guys are set up properly. We'll take a five-minute recess, so that gets corrected.
Okay, thank you.
We'll take a recess. Okay, we'll call back on session here. And Chris, go ahead and continue with your presentation.
Today, I am representing Mr. and Mrs. Zhang. You just heard about the issues on their property, and we're not refuting that in any way, but we would like to kind of go through the, some more clarity on the history of this property from a content perspective, and then get to the potential remedies that could be at hand here, so. So similarly to what the planner had just mentioned, this subdivision was built back in the 1990s, and we've traced historical aerial photos back to that time period to show what this property looked like at that point in time. This is 2007, after some development had been occurred, and you can see that there's, generally what we see is a grassy swale of some sort that was here. But I would like to point out that the biological assessment that was brought up recently, or earlier, about Lot 19, the actual biological opinion indicated, I quote, "It is unclear why the open space/riparian easement on Lot 17 was established if the intent was to protect riparian habitat. The site is a functioning drainage corridor. It carries storm flows but dries out too quickly to support wetland vegetation. It was not now nor historically was ever a riparian corridor." We found the same thing on Lot 19, the Zhang's property, as well. We prepared a biological study, went out and looked at existing, as well as forensic evidence from topography and vegetation. There was no evidence of ever any sort of elderberry bush on this property, and to, I'd like to point out that in order for an elderberry bush to even be jurisdictional, it has to have at least one-inch stems. The photo that was presented in the letter that you received does not have any one-inch stems, as my biologist can attest to. Also, you can see in the photos right here that what we have deemed was a grassy swale up through 2011 definitely changed over time, and it was not the Zhang's that actually changed it. It was the surrounding development. This is a more current photo. You can see that the houses are starting to pop in here, including the one that filed the complaint, and we get to a point here in 2021, excuse me, let me go back one, I'm missing a slide. This one here, it's a little faint, but you can see how the drainage has actually incised quite a bit. It's almost four feet. Can you hear me?
Yeah, you have a laser pointer if you want to be precise.
Okay, so this right here is the drainage, and in previous slides, you can see that this was more of a grassy swale. There's actual grass in here and trees, but by the time you get to 2020, this area was entirely incised. The representation here, the channel is three to four feet deep and two feet wide. This is indicative more of a drainage channel that carries water flows in periods of storm events, and otherwise is relatively dry and does not have any capability of supporting a riparian easement. We would also like to point out that, and I brought a map with you, I actually just passed it out, that shows the riparian easement overlaid onto our current aerial for this property, and what's interesting is that the Zhang's development here is only the latest of a series of events that have really changed this area. The map shows that, in fact, the water that is coming into this drainage starts primarily from up here and is undergrounded into a catchment, and then there is a rock-lined, what looks to be a channel, but we have confirmed after talking to the property owners this past week, that this supposed channel here actually is just a bunch of rocks on the surface, and there is a pipe underneath the ground that conveys water all the way down to this point right here. Additionally, this person also did the same thing, and it now forks into this. So we essentially have a outfall from two properties going into this drainage channel here. Nothing riparian about that. Additionally, I would like to point out that on our map, we show that the property that filed the complaint also built a cage structure within the riparian area that is in violation of all of the codes that were mentioned recently, and they also have two drainage outfalls that are taking overland flow from this property and conveying it through a drainage outlet into this channel. So in summary, what you have is instead of overland sheet flow into this drainage channel, because of all of the other development around here, we now have an incised channel as of 2020. So that's what was modified by the Zhang's. And the Zhang's, you had mentioned earlier that you had questioned why there was an increase in wetland area. Well, it was because the incised channel, that was only about one and a half to two feet wide, was widened out through some grading and then rock line. So surface-wise, you get more, more, more surface. And the planner was correct, the, both our engineer and the county came back and said that the drainage in this area is not adequate. It's not designed properly, and it's going to continue to degrade. So they're suggesting a rock-lined drainage. So we get to what is the remedy for handling this situation? The county has suggested that you deny the map modification to change this into a drainage easement, but in fact, we feel that it is the most appropriate approach moving forward, not because the Zhang's should be given any preferential treatment, but because any other remedy to try and put a riparian easement and riparian corridor back in this area simply would not function. The Zhang's can only control what is on their property. So even if they tried to change this corridor back into something, whatever that is, and remove their portion up here, you still have the property owner to the south that is in violation and dumping water onto this, into this channel, and also these over here. So this entire area, really, all the way up to this point, needs to be changed for this to be any sort of a grassy swale again. So our, we had talked to the county about potential remedies here, and it wasn't necessarily that this was the only option available to us. We did talk about restoring the area through some sort of a restoration plan, but the response that we got from the county was very vague, and basically was, bring us a proposal. Well, we don't feel comfortable about bringing a proposal to change the hydrologic regime and put in a riparian area or try and propose that on this property when nothing in the area supports it, and we're going to be fighting that. So pretty much the Zhang's are going to be forced into filing a complaint on their neighbors in order to get some sort of a more comprehensive remedy going on. So that's, that's where we're at right now.
Do we have any questions at this point from the applicant?
I probably have a few. I guess we can go through real quickly. This is maybe a little bit of a difficult question because it was kind of in the, in your dialogue, so, and it was back quite a bit. You may not even be able to recall the context of this, and unfortunately, I wasn't able to write it down sufficiently, but you made a quote about the reptilian habitat, and then you said that the same was found, the same was found in the Zhang study.
Yeah.
Do you recall?
Yes, I do.
Could you elaborate a little bit on that, because it was a little unclear to me what you were discussing, and what study you were discussing, I guess?
Sure, that, yeah, sure. Okay, so our research, we were trying to pull out whatever biological evidence there was for what happened on Lot 19 here. What we did find was a biological assessment that was completed for Lot 17, which is two doors down, essentially, and that biological assessment concluded that there was no reason for that riparian easement to be in the location where you saw that pool in the last, in the planner's presentation, and that it really was supposed to be a drainage easement in the first place, and that there was no endangered species habitat there. And what we're saying is that through our research and our observations on Lot 19, we understand Lot 19 to be in a similar situation.
Okay, thank you for that. In one of the photographs that was presented by the staff, there are, there's a, there's a significant area of cattails.
Yes.
You can see that in the photograph.
Yep.
In the staff report, on page five, it says, "The photographic evidence of the site predisturbance shows cattails within a depressional area, which is potentially indicative of an aquatic resource, as the area was disturbed before the biological resources assessment was conducted. Aside from historic Google aerials and photographs, there is no way of knowing with certainty what was on site prior to the site disturbance," but that there was evidence of cattails there. Would you agree that that is indicative, as they claim from the staff, that there's an aquatic area?
That's evidence of water, absolutely. There's no question that there's water been flowing over this site forever. The question is whether or not it's any sort of a riparian habitat. So what we are saying is that those cattails were living in an incised channel that was approximately three to four feet deep and about two feet wide. There was no riparian edge to it at all, and our biologist can attest to the fact that no habitat could live on the, on the banks of something like that. And, and I would also add that cattails are actually not an endangered species, and they're invasives. So they can grow almost anywhere that there's water.
Okay, all right.
Let me see, looking at the photograph here, it's kind of hard to tell, but are there solar panels that have been installed within the easement area?
It does not look that way, no, but it does look like the, the outfalls from the two neighbors to the east, as well as the two neighbors to the south are within that riparian easement. So all of that was done without a permit. We did pull up the historical records for permitting for all of these lots, and there has been no permits for any, that cage structure, which is right here, pretty significant. It's about 10 feet within the riparian easement, and there's two outfalls right here in addition to this one.
Okay, you go up a little bit into 19, and it's kind of a grassy...
Yeah, so this is 2020. You can see the incision in there, and then if you go backwards and further in history, you'll see that this is 2011. There's more incision. You can see some level of something going on here. Whether it's this as a riparian endangered species habitat is highly in question, but there's obviously a drainage here. And then over here in 2007, you can see that it was even more of a, of a grassy swale rather than any sort of incised ditch or riparian area, and this is pretty common, you know, as you guys probably know, you're a planning commission, so, you know, when development goes into an area, you tend to see this stuff happen.
Okay. Could you drop the map that, that we have at our table here?
I actually do not have that in a slide.
Oh, you just had it in a...
I just had it in a paper. That's why I actually handed it out to you, if you don't...
Well, you have a current one, right?
Do I have a current map? It was in the previous presentation, unfortunately. I only have our, our historic aerials here.
Well, that's what I'm looking at, historic aerials.
Oh, okay.
You have one that's current?
That's current?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. One sec. Yeah, one more. Okay, so this is current.
Okay, well, I guess that may be where there's, there's a concrete trail that comes in, but it looks like there's maybe solar panels or something there at the end of the trail.
This right here, it's, it looks like a trail, but this is actually a cobble-lined...
Go up a little bit from that.
Right here?
No, on the Lot 19.
It's like a garden, I think.
Yeah, in that area. What's that stuff?
Guards beside a garden.
Okay, so that, those are raised planters. The Zhang's installed those.
They're raised plant beds?
Yes, but they are not within the drainage that has historically been on the property. They are within the riparian easement, as you can see on the map I showed you, because it extends about 75 feet into their property. But we are, what we are saying is that this riparian area here was never actually a riparian area. It was aligned on a map, but there's no endangered species in that area, and riparian has to be supported by water, and, and it has a specific regime of vegetation. There's no evidence in this area that there is any riparian habitat.
Okay, it is, though, in the easement area that's recorded, right?
I'm sorry?
It's in the easement area that's recorded?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess this is for the county. Has there been any notifications to the residents at 4569 Lake Forest that they have built within the riparian area as well?
No.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and open up for public comment. Is there anyone here in public that would, in person, that would like to speak on this item? Please state your name for the record, and then you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Jared Taylor. I am the property owner of the property to the south at 4569 Lake Forest Drive. I'm the one that provided the letter as well. Thanks for hearing me here today. You probably reviewed my letter. Pretty much everything that I'm concerned about is really in there. I think one thing that's really important to look at is on the very last page of the packet from staff is the existing, or what was the map when the subdivision was developed. If you look in there, you can see there's the contour lines, and you can see that there's really a depression that used to be there. I think that's super important that that provided detention for the water flowing through that area that really held it there. That's where the cattails previously grew. That's what kind of held the water from flowing down through that wetlands area, and it was kind of infiltrating through the natural grasses and so forth. Before the Zhang's moved in, there was a pretty good, awesome population of frogs, and I'm not a biologist, but critters that you could hear every night. It was really nice. I feel that they're really deflecting responsibility for their illegal actions here, trying to point fingers at everybody else, and that's okay, I get it. The fact that they openly and knowingly did this grading work in the wetlands area, just really feeling that they're above the law, another wealthy Granite Bay landlord that can come in, do whatever they want, and if they get hot, they get caught, hire the expensive consultants to help dig them out. That's what's really being presented here to you today, and I'm sure you can see that. I really feel that approval of this application would eliminate the open space and the previous wetlands, which really makes this neighborhood so unique and desirable. It's not houses right on top of each other. It has this wetlands incorporated into the neighborhood, such an important part of the neighborhood. I want to point out also, and you probably saw in my letter, that they're only proposing for the wetlands area on their property to be removed, and it's only on their property that actually contains the wetlands area. My property is significantly above for the majority. You'll see that the creek or the wetlands area really runs parallel between our properties, and it does return back onto my property. Towards Lake Forest Drive, where there's a drain inlet, I gave you a photo of right adjacent to our shared fence line. I'm concerned without this previous detention that we had, and the fact that county engineering has confirmed that their water flow analysis and what they're proposing and what they've installed is not adequate, I'm going to potentially have flooding at my drain inlet on my property that's going to go across my driveway and into the street. I also want to point out, as I'm sure you see, that their biological assessment was entirely completed after they completed the grading, so of course, they're not going to find anything. If you grade it, tear it all out, and then do the biological assessment, there's nothing there to find. It's left. Anyway, that's it. I'm against it. Thank you.
Thanks, Jared. Thanks, Jared.
Yeah.
Are you downhill from this property or up?
So, I'm majority uphill. It's, you, you've really got to be there to understand it. Is, is this the pointer? All right, so, this is my property here. So I did obtain a grading permit for all the grading work, which I've done here on my property, and I've worked closely with the county about that. Um, all my inspections, everything totally closed out, and so that's really how I knew this process so well, that you had to have it and how sensitive it was. That was something that I absolutely did for my property. So, here is essentially the wetlands area. So water is collected from all of this area, and like they said, all the way up here, and it all comes down into this area, and then it returns onto my property right here. So this is like the low spot, right, right here, and that's where the drain inlet is. I give you the photo of, right there. So I'm flowing down here, flowing down here, flowing down here. They're all flowing this direction, everybody. And then it goes into my property right here, and then it goes into my drain inlet, and then it, if it floods there, it's going to go across my driveway and into the street, and that's a big concern. So, thank you. Any other questions? Yeah.
But, yeah, I have some questions, but it looks like in some of these photographs, you put drainage lines that go towards their property.
So I do have drain lines that are coming out right here, because I have to drain somewhere, right? Uh, my whole property sheet flows there. That was included with the inspections when I got my grading permit as well.
So it's okay for you to drain into their property, but not okay to drain into your property?
No, I, I think it's.
That's what I'm hearing.
No, I, that's not what I'm saying. So they drain onto my property here, and that's fine. That's the way.
Everybody drains into your property, because that's an easement that was put in by the county before the subdivision was.
I'm, I'm totally.
Built, right?
Yeah, I think that's fine. What I'm talking about is the management of the flow of water, and the fact that if you look at the last page again of the packet, that there used to be a natural depression there, and that acted as a natural, almost like detention basin to hold the water. So in large events of flow, it doesn't all hit my drain inlet at one time, and it doesn't overflow the drain inlet. That's what I'm concerned about. I'm not disputing and saying that they should not be allowed to drain on my property. I totally get that. That's the way it is, and that's fine. I just want to make sure it's correctly hydraulically engineered so that it's going to work, and I'm not going to have a future problem if this is approved now. I mean, it, to me, again, in the last thing, I think it's a little crazy is they're proposing to not look at the wetlands area as a whole. It's not just their property. It's three properties that it's on. They've never once approached me about this and about, should we get rid of this? They're just trying to muscle their way through here and to get your approval. That's what their goal is here. But, but, uh, to answer your question, no, I, I agree that it should continue to be allowed to drain onto my property as it does, and it always has. Yeah.
In addition, the drainage that you have arranged there was done in compliance with the county. Is that correct?
Yeah, the existing drain inlet on my property that receives drainage from their property, that was, been there since before I bought the house. I would assume it has to be, yes. And then all the drainage I did was a part of a grading permit that was inspected and.
By the county?
Correct.
So this picture that was presented to us with these drain outlets going, I'm assuming this is.
I, I haven't seen those. Uh, that wasn't shared with me, but.
Is this on your property?
It, I mean, I'm looking from here to there.
You can have it. I know what it looks like now. I'm just trying to get clarification of what this looks like. I've driven by that probably a hundred times. I have friends who live in that neighborhood, but never paid attention to it, so now I'm paying attention to it.
So, yeah, I think this is on my property.
Okay.
And this, this is my property.
Okay, so all this rock area is on the Zhangs' property, and this is the drainage canal in question?
Well, I mean, they made.
Maybe just real quick, Mr. Taylor.
Sorry.
Go back to the mic, sorry.
To clarify, the canal they made, yes.
But again, that drainage is compliant. It's compliant with the county.
The drainage that's on my property, that's my understanding. If, if I'm incorrect, then I'm incorrect, but I had it all inspected. I forget the county inspector's guy that came out there and met with me. Also, when I submitted the complaint about the Zhangs', he came out there and walked the whole thing with me then as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Stay focused on, on this property that we're reviewing. Is there any other public comment? No one here, no one online. Okay, we'll close public comment. Uh, clarifications, uh, we can bring up staff again, uh, the applicant, a representative, have a discussion.
Yeah, I would like some clarification on the riparian, um, easement area. Uh, it looks like we have two different, um, proposed or drawings here. One is on both lots, and one is just only on Lot nineteen that was presented by the county on, uh, the last page, I guess it is.
The last page of.
Of your staff report.
Of my staff report.
Starting.
Okay, and what is the question about?
So, in, in the area in, highlighted in red, is that the riparian?
Mm-hmm.
True riparian area?
Isn't it, you're asking if that's a true riparian area?
Because the map that was presented by the applicant shows that it falls into two other lot lines or past other lot lines.
It does encompass three different lots, and so I don't know if my slide is on here. I don't know if IT can get my slide back up. But while we're waiting for IT to do that, one thing I do want to note is, um, there are many subdivisions within the county that have these open space riparian protection easements. The note that's on the final map is not unique to Sterling Points Estates Homeowners Association. The reason why I mention this is because conditions change over time, and when development occurs, it does change the overall hydrologic function of the area. Where changes occur and someone wants to modify that easement, there is a process in place for that, and so that is what we are discussing today. But Commissioner Dimatay, I'm trying to get back to that. What I'm trying to show is the selection from the final map that shows the location of the easement relative to all three properties. Okay, it's still working, but. There we go. So, the easement is an open space riparian protection easement that encompasses three properties. The majority of it is on Lot nineteen. It doesn't specify where the OS, open space riparian is. It just designates the entire thing as such.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to, uh, to, I guess, kind of emphasize or ask you to emphasize the fact that this is a open space riparian easement?
That's correct.
We're not just talking about a riparian easement. It's also open space, which implies other values?
That's true, yes. That's correct.
Thank you.
Just an observation, and maybe some comment on, on this, but, you know, obviously, the hydrology has changed in that subdivision.
Yes.
But originally, um, this area was depressed and provided detention, and what's being proposed here is no detention, which hydrology or hydraulically is not good. Um, my own thought is that detention needs to come back and, and serve that function as far as riparian habitat going clear up through that boundary. No, but it's, uh, rich that, you know, um, it's open space. So I don't know. Those are kind of my observations that, that, that hide, the detention basin or that area needs to be brought back to what it was.
Are there any other questions I can answer?
I'll have a couple after. I have a couple of questions for the applicant, and then I'll have a couple.
For the applicant, you said?
Correct, and then just maybe two more.
We can move to the applicant.
Pardon?
Yeah, we can move to the applicant.
Sure, and then I'll probably ask staff to come back.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah. We have questions for you, Chris, so go ahead, Mr. Woodward.
Sure, thanks. Uh, thanks very much. So, just, uh, the nature of the, um, of the disruption of this area, however you'd like to look at it or term it, yeah, that's the name, that's the word that came to mind, but maybe that's not appropriate. But anyway, that, the nature of this, I mean, why is it that, uh, when there are provisions that the, the homeowners association set forth, there are provisions associated with a final map, um, that was, you know, one of the first slides presented? Why is it that the applicant, uh, elected to ignore those and proceed with this process? Why did that happen?
Their, uh, sorry to cut you off there. Um, their response, uh, was that they were talking to their neighbors and did exactly what their neighbors did. So the, um, the dr- the rock-lined drainage that you see on the neighboring properties, uh, upstream, was done before their, uh, theirs, and they claim ignorance. I, I can't say, you know, I can't speak for them. They're, they're, they're sitting in the back row here, so they can welcome to come up and speak for themselves. But I'm really just trying to, um, go with what is the, uh, what is the past historical conditions of this area and what we can do to try and remedy the situation moving forward. Uh, they're willing, they understand that they did something wrong. There's, there's no question about that, but, but the, I think that the question on the table here now is, what do we do to modify the situation? Uh, in contrast, I was, I came up to, to just, uh, explain that the contours that were brought up previously about this depression are very old, and there's really no evidence that that was even recent history. Uh, our biological assessment did not show any sign of a, a previous depression in this area, and you can see, uh, we pointed out the outfalls, uh, of, from the neighboring properties. What might have been a depression long before they put those outfalls in is no longer there, even if the Zhangs did nothing. So our, we are, the twenty-twenty aerial shows an incised channel that's approximately three to four feet deep and two feet wide. There's, we, there's no questioning that. So, uh, you know, going forward, what is the remedy here is, is more important in my mind, you know? So, and I think the remedy seems to hit on all of the properties here. You've got a riparian easement that, um, covers twenty-five feet of the, the complaint, um, you know? And that water that's coming in from their property, which should have been sheet flow and probably going south to their drainage at some point, rather than being directed to the back of the property and into this drainage, um, that's part of the problem. So what do we do about it?
That was, that was excellent, and I understand the question you want to answer, but there are other questions on the table as well, and it would be appreciated if you'd answer some of those. So for example, um, you know, why is it that the first code violation that went to, uh, the Zhangs' was apparently ignored?
Uh, I could let the Zhangs speak about that, if you don't mind.
Sure.
I, I didn't start working on the project until August, when, when they brought me in to remedy the situation.
Okay, Chris, we can bring up the Zhangs. I mean, we're, you're, you're representing them, so.
Hello, everyone. Good morning.
Hi.
Hello, everyone. Good morning. Um, my name is Ga Zhang. I'm the owner of, uh, this, uh, nine-seven-hundred. Um, so when we got the notice, I came to, uh, uh, Jerry's, uh, property. So he was doing the, he was building his, um, what is that, a swimming pool. So I came to his property, and he mentioned that, uh, you are working on this riparian area. And, uh, I was saying, hey, why did you, uh, so look at the, the, which one is the reader? Yeah, so I was asking him that, what about this? So, but I didn't get any clear answer. And when I was asking him about, um, this grading area for the cage, and I also, I didn't get a clear answer. So that is why I'm thinking that, um, I did not think there was anything wrong with the continuing working. So this is what I thought after I got the notice.
So they're asking what, why didn't you respond to the first notice?
What's that, sorry?
Why didn't you respond to the first notice?
Oh. Did we get? Um, we did have a, I, I, I didn't know how to respond. Okay.
Okay.
That's it for me?
Um. That's, that's it. Thank you very much.
I thought, I thought I heard you say earlier that cattails are an invasive species?
They can be, yeah.
They're, they're native, aren't they, to, uh?
There, there are multiple species of cattails. I can have our biologist come up and, and speak about that if you'd like.
Well, I'm just wondering, uh, you know, every place you see a wetland, you see cattails?
Well, I mean, there's.
And so, uh, so I'm just, I guess, trying to get clarification, what's wrong with the cattails?
Yeah, my name's Dr. Bruce Barnett. I'm, uh, Barnett Environmental, and, uh, I did the biological assessment, and I did the historical analysis of this area. Um, in the early nineties, uh, there used to be a intermittent stream that passed through this area. Um, and as the area built out, um, this, the integrity of this stream essentially disappeared, because you chop it up. There, there's a, a theory, MacArthur and Wilson's theory of an island biogeography. So you create these little islands, and each island has less value than the larger, uh, habitat that it was extracted from. So as this area developed, you started creating little islands, little islands of habitat. I think that's what the, um, riparian easements were trying to get to. They were trying to announce, okay, here's this little island. Well, we better save it, because it's the last island we have. But what it didn't acknowledge is that the island in and of itself can't support itself. It needs everything around it to support it. And so as you're removing the resource that moves into this little island and gives it water and gives it animals and gives it seeds and things like that, then you remove the value that comes into it, and it, it essentially languishes and, and it senesses, and it, it doesn't, doesn't survive as an ecological island anymore. Um, so that ultimately, as the build-out continued in this area, these riparian easements look more like artifacts. Artifacts of some past wishful thinking that maybe we could save the area. But what then has developed in that area is a drainage problem. People have, uh, put catchments in, and they've concentrated drainage and put it in a pipe, and it pipe out falls right before the Zhangs' property, and so water dumps onto that property. The neighbor to the south has two outfalls into the Zhangs' property. Now, it was convenient, for prior to night, to twenty-twenty, it looked sort of natural. They go, okay, we'll just dump it over there, and it should look beautiful. Now, cattails are as much an indication of a disturbed and a stressed system as anything. Like, if you go to marshes and you look at a healthy marsh, you'll see some tulies and cattails, but you won't see a, a channel clogged with them. And what we were seeing here is a channel now clogged with cattails. As soon as there's water in a dry area, these things are going to jump in there, and they're going to grow. But then what happens is that while it may have some value, and red-winged blackbirds, for example, nest there. Um, not here, because it's in the middle of a residential area. But as you clog this area with cattails, then the drainage function gets disrupted, because then you clog a channel. So even if you weren't to do anything, you should remove the cattails, because you increase the flow capacity of that drainage line. So what we're trying to do is say, how is best to incorporate whatever conservation we can, which is important, no question about it. But this area has been converted to, to a residential subdivision. And what is, seems to be more important now, even expressed by the complaining, is that there could be a potential drainage issue. And it's not because there was a, a slight depression on the Zhangs' property. That slight depression probably didn't do a whole heck of a lot for retention. But what is the problem is that things started getting dumped onto there. You had a very small incised ditch that was going to overtop anyway. So these guys figured, I'm going to do what they're doing, because the drainage, as it comes down, is going to flood my property, so I'm going to do this. They did it wrong. They should have talked to somebody first. But after the whole thing happened, they came to us and said, can you help us? That's what we're trying to do. How to best solve this problem? We believe that rather than try to restore an area to some riparian, which isn't even, uh, accurate, but much more of a stream-side habitat, we believe that the best function and use of this is as a drainage easement to protect the properties, the surrounding properties. So what we're trying to do is, is request this map modification and turn this archaic, we believe, artifact of a riparian easement into a much more functional drainage easement. And that drainage easement serves not just their property, but everybody's upstream and surrounding them. Now, ultimately, that's going to draw the county in to redesign that drainage in that subdivision. That's an important thing, and maybe this is a good thing that, that it forces the county to do that. But at least this is a beginning. to do that, but at least this is a beginning. We've, we've expanded the capacity of that channel, uh, we've removed the obstructions to the channel, so at least it's gonna conduct more water than it, than a, a four-foot-deep by two-foot-wide ditch, it's gonna clog with, uh, cattails. So we're trying to piece by piece improve the drainage there, but the first step is to, let's turn it into what it is, it's a drainage, it's a drainage. And we can plant plants around it and make it beautiful and do all those things, that's a good idea. But the most important thing is how does it function as a drainage for the surrounding properties? Because, God forbid, we get a 2018 storm event and, and these people are gonna be flooded out because they don't have adequate drainage there. So they're trying to start the process and get better drainage, but now we have to go the rest of the way. So that's why we're requesting this change from riparian to drainage.
Okay, a couple of questions. First of all, you used "we" a lot, so were you in, were you involved in designing what the Zhangs did there?
No.
Did you have any clue what they were doing ahead of time?
No.
Okay, so it's not "we," it's them, right?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so you're coming in after the fact, hired by them to explain to us why what they did was a good thing?
Yes.
Okay. Um, are they professionals at hydrology?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, you know, one of the things that surprised me is, it's listed as an open-space riparian, not just a riparian, and what's real, be, being talked about here is just riparian. And, uh, if you could come up with a solution on this, then, uh, you know, why change this to just a drainage?
That would be totally fine with us, we, we were just coming up with the proposal, we, we had, uh, we were given this option by the planning department, literally. They told us, what, look at Lot 17 and follow what they did. So that's what we came here to do today, but we're happy to try and modify this area to more appropriately fit what the original intent was from an open-space perspective, no problem. We just don't think that the Zhangs should be the only ones that, um, are facing some ramifications from their efforts because the other property owners did the same thing.
Well, and I don't believe there's a lot of ecological value to s- to an, to a riparian habitat at this location that can't be supported.
It's, it's, in the original plan, it was called open space, too.
Sure, and you can incorporate o- open space into a drainage easement.
Right, and so the proposal here is to reduce that to, uh, what, a 10-foot-wide from a, whatever.
Well, the, so if, if, our understanding from county staff was that we have two options, either we can pursue a map modification or we can propose a restoration of this area. So the question is, if we went with a restoration option, meaning turning it into pre-disturbance conditions, as they pointed out in their slide, what is that pre-disturbance condition? Because we are showing an aerial from 2020 that has an incised channel that's four feet deep and two feet wide, is that what there, is that, is that the remedy? Because otherwise, the Zhangs don't have any control on anybody else's property, so we're just trying to figure out a path forward.
You can easily incorporate open-space character into a drainage easement, you can easily do that.
Yeah, but we're talking about 10-foot versus, what was it before, 35 or 40 feet?
75.
35 feet?
75.
It was 75.
Okay, 75?
That sort of encumbers anybody on a property.
Well, that's, they bought the property with the 75-foot easement on it, right?
We understand that.
Okay, and so, at any rate, that's one thought, but, uh, as far as restoration, I guess that's a challenge, but can't that be met somehow?
Well, sure can, and we're asking, we're asking for a, sort of a hybrid solution. Let's turn it into a, primarily a drainage easement and then we'll landscape around it. We'll make sure that it main, has native characteristics, we'll plant wild rose, we'll do that kind of thing. Um, you wanna put some elderberries, that's fine, too. But the important thing is so that it functions, because it won't function as a riparian habitat if you restore it, it won't, I'm telling you, it won't.
This is a bit, this is a bit of debate, I admit that, so.
Well, I've only done this for 35 years.
No, I'm not, I'm not debating with you, I'm debating here, I'm making, that's a comment for my colleagues, but, you know, we continue to hear "we," uh, but this was done by people and not you, right?
That's correct.
All right, so this is a county responsibility, if the drainage is not, uh, adequate there, then this is a county responsibility, it's not the responsibility of the Zhangs to take this on and solve this problem, it's the county's responsibility. So this is not about "we," this is about this particular issue, you know, you weren't involved in this, you're now coming in after the fact, hired by the Zhangs to make their case.
And to provide a solution.
So noted, thank you.
Do you agree that it was historically a riparian area?
I would say prior to the initial development, you, it was a scrub area. I mean, riparian, when you think riparian, you think of cottonwood trees and stuff like that. There's a scrub riparian where, yeah, there's the occasional oak bush and there could be the occasional elderberry bush along a water course, and that could in fact be called riparian.
Okay, yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Couple of questions for staff.
Yeah, and, um, I do want to note, too, that Candace Bartlett with Engineering and Surveying Division is here as well, so if you have questions about the pre-construction drainage conditions, she can provide information on that as well.
Okay, uh, perhaps it's, perhaps it's Candace's issue then, I, I'm curious about whether or not, uh, there might be value in examining this area because there does appear to be some concern, both from the applicant and also the complainant that is in the back of the room there, uh, regarding the drainage in this area, is there, uh, value in perhaps going out and evaluating that as a county?
Perhaps, and I can certainly, Candace, if you wanna speak to drainage questions. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. Um, so with this project, there was a drainage analysis provided, it did not identify any significant concerns with the pre-project, um, condition, uh, did identify that the rock-lined swale that was constructed was undersized and so the proposal was to reconstruct it larger to facilitate these flows. Um, if there was onsite drainage problems, um, that would be something that the Zhangs could have applied for a grading permit to resize their onsite drainage if there wasn't the open-space riparian easement, um, to correct those issues onsite. Uh, it wouldn't necessarily be a county responsibility, we would just help facilitate the grading permit process for them to size it appropriately and we would review those calculations.
Okay. If that was directed me, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm still, uh, we're talking about a, a drainage easement when actually we have a 75-foot open-space easement.
Right.
And so that's kind of one issue that I'm thinking about, but then that, they're talking about, well, how do we fix this problem? And it seems like they could fix a problem with an open-space easement as well as what they got now, but are there options available to them to fix the problem?
Uh, so apart from the riparian open-space restrictions on construction in those areas, purely from a grading permit and drainage easement perspective, there are options, the Zhangs can apply for a grading permit, um, to reconstruct or reconfigure the drainage on their property, just apart from all the open-space stuff.
So I, I guess what you're talking about is they could actually do some engineering and some biological evaluations and, uh, come into the county with a solution?
Yes.
That, uh, that you could look at and approve?
Yes, with this project, when it was still going through environmental review, when it was going toward approval, um, we had asked for a revised drainage report to analyze off-site, like downstream impacts, um, because it would be less pervious, so it would affect the downstream facilities, just to make sure everything was sized appropriately, um, and that would be something that we would review with grading plans or improvement plans with the drainage analysis to make sure it all functions appropriately.
Okay, so they could meet with you and, and get an idea of what criteria that you should be-
Yeah.
-evaluating whatever they come in with.
Yes, there's an approval process for grading and drainage stuff just outside of the whole open-space riparian restrictions on this lot.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Does the drainage area outside of the riparian area, um, is it restricted by anything? Is it flow good, is it the same size as what's in the riparian area? Two-foot-wide, four, three, I don't know what the dimensions are, I haven't walked out there, but is, does that get backed up there if the riparian area is brought back to riparian standards and, you know, I'm just trying to think, is that really gonna be big enough or is the drainage area really adequate for all of the water that drains off of 20, 21, 22 onto the Zhangs property and then on to Lot 19, 18 as well?
So I'm not familiar with the specific off-site conditions, but I know with this project, when they provided their drainage analysis, they provided a shed area for all the off-site flows coming onsite, it was not large enough to encompass all the off-site flows, but that is analyzed with the drainage report to make sure that whatever size is sized appropriately for all off-site flows coming through the project.
Okay.
And then checking impacts downstream.
Thank you.
Uh, it looks like there was a depression beforehand where maybe there's a raised, like, garden bed, have you seen that or evaluated that?
Uh, from looks, from the looks of it on Google Earth, it looked like to me that there was kind of a shallow depression across part of that open-space easement. Um, it was kind of overland flow, but then also a little bit channelized because of the depression. Um, I'm not sure if the flows ever reached where those current, uh, planter boxes are.
So it was not an expectation of retention for this property?
There is some assumed retention because it's a natural vegetated-
Yeah.
-state versus the rock-lined ditch would obviously have less detention, um, they could design like a grass-lined swale instead of the rock-lined ditch if there was an approval and that was part of the proposal.
Mm-hmm. It's safe to assume that the changes made on this property will affect the water flows, is that correct?
Yes, and designs can incorporate, um, remedies to that.
And if they would have contacted beforehand, that could have been figured out?
Yes, apart from the open-space riparian restrictions on construction in this area, a grading permit is something that can easily be, uh, obtained to modify drainage and grading onsite.
Thank you.
So if they remove the cattails, which are, they grow wild, right, so I've probably taken out thousands of them myself on my ranches just to have water flow, it would actually be a problem for water flow to have cattails in there and not let this water go through, it'd be restricted. So actually by them removing the cattails, probably did a benefit to all their neighbors to let water flow, because you go stick a tree in the middle of a canal, you're gonna have some disturbance, and so if they pull that out, the water's gonna flow a lot easier and get out of everybody else's property, would that not be correct?
Um, I'm not sure on how much cattails, like, number-wise restrict flows, but there's, I guess there could be benefits assumed of water flowing more freely, but that can also impact downstream facilities by having quicker response times and water moving quicker and all gathering toward the end.
But if it's all rock-lined, there's not gonna be much erosion.
Yeah.
Right.
And from what I see here, it's all rock-lined, right? With underground pipes in some areas, so I don't think erosion's a problem.
Not beforehand, it wasn't.
Right. But on the other neighbors, thank you for all that, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
You could sit down.
Thank you.
Yeah, Callie, one more, I have one more quick, quick question for you. You said that there are, that the, the first slide that you put up with the whole breakdown, which was an excellent slide of what's involved in this particular, uh, subdivision, um, you know, and the restrictions and that sort of thing for this particular type of area, that this is found in multiple areas and across the county, is that true?
That is absolutely true, yes.
Okay, so is there a, would you agree that although each case would have to be considered separately in terms of the conditions and situations, if in fact we were to permit this to go forward, uh, would that not be somewhat precedent-setting in that we're allowing this violation to take place when, uh, proper, proper permits were not granted in the first place? In other words, hey, uh, you know, you could theoretically say to the rest of the neighbors here, you know, this violation took place, the, uh, commission approved it, um, and so everybody else can just go out and do what they choose to do as well?
I would agree it's precedent-setting and I noted as much in the staff report, there are multiple subdivisions that have these open-space riparian protection easements or similar easements that have that language that you can't do, um, any kind of work within there, including landscaping, you can't put landscaping, um, clippings in, in those easements, that language is found in multiple subdivisions. When someone wants to modify their easement, which, or do work in those easements, uh, they have to come to the county to get written permission from the DRC, which is the Development Review Committee. Um, for example, uh, if there's an, an open-space area that's managed by an HOA and they wanna do vegetation management in there for, for fire safety, they get a tree permit from the county, we may require biological assessment and we may impose conditions to ensure that that work is done in an appropriate manner. So it could be precedent-setting, yes, if someone is removing the habitat or resource that is subject of that easement and then requesting that easement to be eliminated using the lack of resource as justification, yes, that's precedent-setting.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so if I can just add to that, so there is, uh, you know, whether, whether or not there's an easement there, there's a process to fix any drainage issues or concerns. Easement in place, the conditions of approval are written, just like Callie said, uh, where you can ask permission to go in there and make those adjustments that are necessary. The first issue for the commission is, you know, we have a re- a recorded open-space riparian easement on a subdivision map. Uh, every property owner around there should be aware of that, even the neighboring properties, when they bought their property, like 21 or 22, 18, uh, when they bought those properties, they're aware that there's an open-space riparian area there, so really the first question to be answered, you know, you know, is the commission okay with us adjusting that easement based on the work that's been, you know, the unauthorized work that's been in there? If there's a drainage issue, it seems that there's a mechanism to get that addressed, even if that open-space riparian easement stays in place. Uh, uh, you know, if it's reduced that open-space riparian easement, uh, that would allow for other improvements on the property. It looks like the Zhangs already, uh, put in some garden boxes and other things within that easement area, but they could potentially put a structure in that area, too, if that open-space riparian easement is reduced, so that's something that the commission has to consider. Uh, or if there are nor, no resources there whatsoever, uh, and the commission does wanna entertain, you know, adjusting that boundary, uh, you know, that's something that the commission can take a look at and, uh, you know, you can, uh, if the commission does go down that path, then we would be looking for, you know, some kind of a tentative approval and staff would have to go back and look at, from an environmental review standpoint, what that would require before you brought something back before your commission, so that's an option as well.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Callie, I think we'll move to discussion.
Thank you.
Paul, yeah, but there's more clarification needed.
Yeah, well, it's, it's obvious to me that there's a problem there that needs to be fixed and it's gonna require some biological work as well as engineer, engineering work. And so personally, uh, they bought the property with a 75-foot easement on it, I think they have to look at that and honor the easement that they have and, uh, do the work on the drainage that needs to be done. And, uh, so it's beyond our commission to really tell you what to do, other than, it's gonna take some work with the county as well as an engineer and biologist to, uh, figure that out. So at any rate, uh, you know, I'm gonna recommend that we follow the, uh, the, uh, denial process.
Callie, can you put up the recommendations? Sorry, go ahead.
So, uh, if we're still in discussion, that's okay, or if you want a motion, I can do that, too.
I would, I'd like a bit of discussion, you know, one, I have to agree with my knowledge that recreating a riparian habitat is not going to be successful in this location, given the modifications of the adjacent properties. Number two, I think the staff needs to look at the adjacent properties for violation of that easement, because you take a look at, uh, the 9714 rimrock, there is no vegetation whatsoever in the easement and that was not there, and then you have a structure within the other easement. So I think the county has to take a look at violations, understand that those properties started putting drainage in there directly, so I think there is a drainage problem that needs to be looked at, but, um, I think, again, there was an open-space easement and that needs to be respected. And I, I do agree as well with both, uh, both comments. Just real quick, Rich, uh, one thing is, one thing is that I do think that it would be appropriate for, uh, the homeowners association or, um, whomever to, you know, if necessary, file a code, uh, violation, if that's the necessary mechanism to get the county involved in these particular other areas, I, I agree a hundred percent. But we can't allow that to be the driving force-
But we can't allow that to be the driving force in this decision.
Yeah, I agree, and I agree with you guys that, you know, what they did was wrong. Whether they knew it or not, it, it, that needs to be addressed. But there is a drainage, a huge drainage issue, it looks like. And I, with my own personal experience, I've had to drain a lot of water off a lot of acreage. And a clean canal lets water flow better than a clogged canal. And it looks like from pictures that, you know, it has been modified in other areas. And I'm not ready to vote on this, whether to deny it or accept it. I think it really should, my perspective should be postponed until we can actually take a better look at this. So that way, this is done properly and the drainage is suitable for all of these houses and the Zang's are not stuck with this water on their property or lot eighteen is not stuck with water. And maybe at that time, that culvert pipe that was put underneath lot eighteen was big enough and sufficient at that time, but maybe it's not sufficient anymore as you are going to have harder ground, less penetrative water and more runoff. And, you know, I don't want to see anybody have any kind of flood issues. I've been through twenty feet of water and I don't want two feet of water people's property. So it, my recommendation right now is we postpone any recommendations or denials on this until I think we get better information on this drainage canal and maybe an adjustment for the boundaries of the open space.
Yeah, well, I think it's, it's obvious to me that there's going to have to be some work on the drainage.
For sure.
And that's, I mean, no matter what we do, it, it's going to take some work and I really can't see where postponing this is going to help any because there's work that they have to do. They have to do their work with the county. And so at any rate, as it stands right now, I would make a motion that we go with the staff recommendation to deny the map modification request as supported by the findings contained in the staff report.
And still part of my, my complaint is water flows where nothing grows. And if there's things growing there that are going to make this a problem for other neighbors, I think we need to look at that.
I concur that it does need to be, this does need to be studied further, but I also concur with Rich. So I'm willing to second that motion.
Okay, for this first and the second, let's do a roll call vote.
Real quick question of EJ. If they were to come back, because right now this is open space and riparian, so my guess is the county has to say you have to replace the riparian. I'm concerned about that because I don't think you can. But if they were to come back and readdress this to the commission in the future, is that possible?
So yeah, so that's, that's.
If we deny this application now.
As a motion stands, if this was denied, it would be reverted back to code compliance because it was a code complaint that came in and they would be required to restore it, which would require a restoration plan submitted to the planning division, which would also include review of the drainage. That's one option. The other option is if the commission wants to give direction for us to further study the drainage issue and also take a look at the, you know, what that restoration plan would look like, we can do that as well.
I suggest we do that.
Well, I guess what I'm questioning is, wouldn't that happen anyway? What you're talking about?
Well, I think it would under code compliance.
Well, you know, if you didn't, if you deny it, what we're, we would be, what would be happening is that open space riparian easement would remain the same. What goes on in that area would still be resolved, but the, the actual boundaries of that open space riparian easement, riparian easement would remain the same. So if the commission was to elect to reevaluate that boundary as well as look at the restoration drainage, that, you know, that's not the motion on the table right now, but that is another option.
I guess what I, what I'm questioning is with the, with the motions on the table, what would happen would, this would become, what would you call it, abatement issue? It would go back into that status.
Well, our hope would be that the property owner would work with the county and we would get a restoration plan to restore that area and at the same time, we can address any drainage issues if there are drainage issues.
Yeah. And so they still would have, they would have to do that anyway, no matter what at this point.
To resolve the violation, correct.
Right, okay.
Yeah, it seems to me denial is a forcing function here.
Right. Yeah, and if they want to come back with a proposal on adjustment of that line, we can evaluate that separately.
But if it's denied, they'd have to appeal it. Correct. If we deny it, they have to appeal it to do an adjustment on the.
Correct.
On the, on the easement. If we don't deny it or let it stand, can they go in a process of an application to readjust that easement without, I don't know. I think it's too big personally. I mean, this is my.
Well, I think we have, we have a motion for first and a second. Let's go ahead and move to a vote.
We have a second.
Clarity.
Okay.
Is there more clarity you need?
No, I'm good.
Okay. All right, let's move to a vote.
And the motion was to deny, correct?
Yeah.
I have a first for Mr. Johnson and a second for Mr. Woodward. Mr. Haughey.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Dematte?
No.
Mr. Herzog?
Yes. Okay, we're going to move on to our third timed item, appeal of the zoning.
Your appeal language.
Mr. Chairman. Oh, yeah, let's do that.
Chairman.
Appeal, right?
Yes.
Decision of the planning commission may be appealed by anyone who appeared at today's hearing and provided comment or anyone that submitted written comments on this item. An appeal must be filed within ten days of today's date and shall be accompanied by a filing fee of six hundred and forty-one dollars. Now, we're going to move on to our third timed item, appeal of the zoning administrator's denial of the Sorenson setback variance. Members of the public may now raise their hands. Press star nine if you are calling in to begin queuing up for public comment on this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. Adam Anderson, assistant planner, will be presenting on this item. Hello, Adam.
Morning. Good afternoon, Chairman Herzog and fellow planning commissioners. My name is Adam Anderson and I'm representing the planning division and I will be presenting the staff report for the Sorenson appeal to you this morning. So we are here to consider an appeal from Mr. Sorenson to the zoning administrator's denial of a variance to allow an existing shop to be located three point seven four feet from a northern property line and a zero foot setback for a nine foot retaining wall on the north property line where a thirty foot setback is normally required. So this property is located in Colfax. You'll see it as the red highlighted property right here in the middle. The blue line here is indicating the county line and also Bear River. The Colfax general plan calls for this property to be split. You'll see another thin line that runs right here. This portion of the property is part of the rural estate, one point one to four point five acre minimum for the general plan. And this portion of the property on this side of, following this line all the way up is part of a special study corridor in the Colfax area. We also have Ben Taylor Road coming through here and that's a major thoroughfare for people that are familiar with Colfax. The blue area is similarly zoned parcels that are all zoned farm with a one acre minimum. The yellow area is also zoned farm, but with a two point three acre minimum. And the orange is residential single family, three acre minimum. And lastly, the green is timber production zone and follows the area along the river there.
I have a question.
Of course.
Maybe you could elaborate a little bit on what the special studies area zone is.
Sure, yeah. I have some quotes on that. So in the general plan for the Colfax area, it specifically states that careful attention, or for the special study corridor, careful attention should be given to protecting the natural scenic and recreational resources and encourage limited, limited development in those areas. Some parts should be preserved in their natural state and others, careful controlled development for the recreation, for recreation should be encouraged and properly controlled development will harmonize with the natural settings and attract visitors to the area. So it's usually not, in the Colfax area, you have this portion that's part of the special study corridor. And on the other side of Colfax with the ridge line, there's another special study corridor that follows eighty. Okay? Here we go. So this is an aerial image of the site. I wanted to show this because it's important to see that this is the fire scar that came up here from the river fire. It is surrounded the proposed property and burned a lot of the western portion. It also burned down the neighbor to the south and it burned the area, the property to the north. This house remained. This house was burned. So were homes down here. So this was one of the few homes that remained along this street and along this ridge line. And, yeah. So the site itself is sloped and it is, the developed portion is sloped at about a sixteen percent grade and the rest of the property sloping down towards the river is at a twenty-two So background on the site, this has a little bit of a history and I kind of want to go over that because it's important for where we're at today. The retaining wall that's in question was originally constructed in two thousand and eleven without the benefit of a permit. It wa, and then a shop was constructed in two thousand and fourteen with it being finished in two thousand and fifteen, also without the benefit of a permit. The county received a complaint in January of two thousand and eighteen for buildings without permit on the site. And then an after the fact permit was issued for the site in April of two thousand and nineteen for the wall in the shop. The after the fact permit did show that the property line was thirty feet from the retaining wall and from the shop. And it was only after the second complaint was received regarding setbacks that we identified that the, the property line was much closer to the structures than were initially believed. So a survey was created in September of two thousand and twenty detailing that property line. And when we came out for a setback inspection, the after the fact permits failed in March of two thousand and twenty-one. The variance was applied for and a hearing was held in January of two thousand and twenty-two. And that brings us to today. This is a site plan for the location. You can see that the shop is located up here. This is the retaining wall that stretches along here and it actually extends into the neighbor's property by a little over four feet. And we also have the, the corner of the shop here and it is about three point seven four feet from the property line here. This is the portion of the property that is about a sixteen percent slope and the rest of the property is at the twenty-two percent. And I'll have a picture later that kind of depicts that slope for you. So this is from the corner of the, of the shop right here, and this is three feet point seven four from the property line, which is starting right here. This is from the other portion of the property line. This is looking north along the shop. This is the beginning of the retaining wall and the retaining wall continues. This is from the north property line looking west. This is a stake showing where the property line is. And if you take it up, and we can continue that image over here, where that point is right there, it's a little orange dot, that is the property line for this site. So that shows that we have a good portion of the retaining wall on the neighboring site with the shop being a little over three feet from the property line. Lastly, this also shows the burn scar in the area and the slope. This is the developed portion with the home and this is sloping down the twenty-two percent towards the, the river, which would be down in this area. So a variance for, a variance hearing was held on January twentieth of two thousand and twenty-two. The appellant, Mr. Sorenson, stated that he was under the initial belief that the shop did not, that since the shop did not include water or power, it did not require a building permit. He further stated that as soon as he became aware of a building permit being required, he began to work with the county to bring that building into compliance. The appellant also requested the variance so that he would not lose the value that he's already put into the property. And at the time of his submittal, he did believe that the property line was twenty feet or thirty feet away from where he was constructing. We did receive two public comments during the, during the variance hearing. The one was a verbal opposition to the variance because they were concerned about the safety of the retaining wall and they requested that the shop and the retaining wall be removed completely. We also received a second comment that was regarding a separate concern that was not relevant to the variance that was being heard. The zoning administrator took action to deny the variance for finding that the property was uniform in shape and meets the one acre minimum zoning size and that the shop could be located in a manner that complied with the setback requirements without relief from the standard. In addition, a zero foot setback for the retaining wall did not meet the minimum departure of standards requirements for granting a variance. Mr. Sorenson filed an appeal of the zoning administrator's decision on January twenty-first and that appeal letter contended three main points. It contended that the topography of the site limits buildable area and required a retaining wall to be built. It also contended that the location of the shop was necessary for, to allow for fire access. And lastly, it contended that the construction of the shop and wall was placed due to a misunderstanding of where the property line was located. So the site is sloped, but the, the slope does not prevent development on the site. Retaining walls could have been designed to both meet the side setback height limit and create a buildable pad. It's not uncommon for these types of, of slopes to be constructed or to have constructed retaining walls to support an engineered pad. And slope is often a special circumstance that can be used to support a variance request. However, in this case, the zoning administrator determined that the property does have buildable area onsite and that the property owner was not limited in building site locations. The area in front of the retaining wall shop structure towards the center of the parcel, that was relatively flat and could have been a potential building location. Also, in regards to retaining walls, retaining walls within setbacks are limited to six feet in height in this zone and you could have designed it with a stepped up feature described here, where you might do, say, six feet and then step it back a bit and then do another three feet to get your total of nine. And if you have enough distance between these two, we would count those as two separate So I had mentioned on the previous slide that there was potential buildable area. I wanted to highlight where that buildable area is here. This is a flat portion in front of the, or of the shop that was constructed. And this is approximate, well, the, the shop here is about a fifty by forty area. And so you can see that there is some space here where they could be meeting that, that thirty foot setback from property line. They also made the contention that, that fire access was necessary for the site and this area was reviewed by county fire planners and they determined that this existing driveway here and Hammerhead was sufficient for, for our fire safe turnarounds and that while additional fire turnaround, like down here, is appreciated, it's not, there's no requirement to go beyond Lastly, they also made the contention that, sorry, that the construction of the shop and wall was placed due to a misunderstanding of where the property line was located. The zoning administrator did take in to consideration the circumstances under which the retaining wall and shop were built. However, the zoning administrator did not find special circumstances applicable to the subject property. That included size, shape, topography, location or surroundings. And since a stated hardship is not a finding that we can be taken into consideration when viewing a variance, it was a portion of his denial. it was a portion of his denial. It's the property owner's responsibility to know both where their property lines are and accurately depict them in site plans provided to the county. And if the project had followed the building permit process, the property lines and setback issues would have been addressed before the construction of the, of the shop and retaining wall. And at that time, it may have qualified for a variance due to slope. But at this time, it's, it's not a minimum departure. So based on the analysis, staff recommends that the planning commission uphold the decision of the zoning administrator to deny the variance, supported by the findings in the staff report. And I'm available if you have any other questions.
Okay, thanks, Adam. Questions for staff?
Adam, quick question. What, what is the size limit before you have to have a permit? They, they said they didn't know what the size limit was.
Any structure that has power, water, anything that's over a hundred and twenty square feet and anything that's over eight feet in height. Thank you.
I have a quick question for counsel, actually. Is it even in the authority of this commission to authorize any kind of structure being constructed on someone else's property? And then say, that's okay. I mean, we literally have a retaining wall built on somebody else's property by the, by the applicant, right?
Do you mind if I just touch on that for one second? Part of this, part of this variance request is to include that that extension onto the neighbor's property would have to be re-engineered to be a zero foot setback. So we're only granting him on the retaining wall, the request was a zero foot setback. He's aware that the four foot, four thirteen would need to be removed and re-engineered.
That's my error then, I get it. Thank you.
I don't know the rules well enough, but if this was an ADU, is there anything that changes?
Yes. If this was an ADU, it would be allowed five feet from the side property line. So that would be the change there. However, the structure, the retaining wall itself, since it is over height, since it's nine feet high, it would still not be allowed at that distance. It would need to be redesigned to be either stepped back. Or if they wanted to do a nine foot retaining wall, it would need to be completely out of the setback.
Thank you.
Yeah, with the ADU, they can actually get, I believe, four feet from the property line.
Oh, I'm sorry, four feet, not five.
Same, just close.
Does it currently have water and power in it?
I do not believe it does. No, it does not. Didn't when I was there.
So I don't know, it, I guess normally I'd think a shop would at least have power. But at any rate, you know, I guess in the county, you know, some structures in the, in the, you know, farm zones don't require permit.
Correct. If, if this was an agricultural building, it could be an exempted agricultural structure if they get approval from the planning or from the ag commissioner. It would also need to be on a minimum ten acres, which this property is not. And it would also still need to meet setbacks. An agricultural exempt building is not exempt from setbacks.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to be clear, can the building still be there if the retaining wall is moved?
That's a question for an engineer.
Yeah.
I know that the applicant is working with an engineer to have this retaining wall redesigned so that it would be able to meet the zero foot requested. But I don't know if that's, everything's possible in engineering, but I'm assuming the cost.
I hear ya. Can, can we have that answer question or that question answered?
Eric will take that one for me.
How big is this building?
Hello, commissioners. I'm Eric Griffin with Engineering and Surveying. They could do it without the retaining wall, but it would be over a ten foot slope and they would have to have a letter signed by an engineer saying that the slope would be stable at that point. That makes sense?
Yeah.
And then they have been working to redo the retaining wall. However, it's still going to be within the setback, so. That it would be off the neighboring property line.
Do you have to take the building down to do that or is there?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Yeah, the engineer's redoing the calculations and everything to get it into compliance without taking it down.
Any other questions for engineering?
No.
Adam, how big is this building?
Thirty by forty. Thirty by forty.
Okay, thank you.
Can I bring up the applicant? Sven, would you like to come up and? I don't know her name. The applicant.
Her name is Sue, I think.
Hi, I'm Susan Sorensen. First of all, I would like to say that it's a garage, it's not a shop. He has electric in a shop. It's part of the house, so we're not needing any electric attached to that. I just have a little statement I'd like to read and I know there's going to be repetitions and I'm sorry to be taking up so much of your time and boring you with these, because Adam presented so well, covered all the details. We are making an appeal to protect our investment because of the changes we have made to our property. By clearing our land for fire access and building the garage in question, California Fire Department was able to save our home while the forest on all four sides of us was consumed by last summer's river fire. A firefighter told us that after the triage of his, of homes in our area, a crew was sent to our property to use it as defense. The neighborhood refers to our house as, and one that didn't burn. With no intent of malice, but only of improving our property and clearing it to allow better access for fire prevention, we began removing combustible vegetation and spreading gravel for a drive, which required a retaining wall as the property is very steep. Regretfully, we assumed a building permit for the wall and also the outbuilding structure with no electricity or plumbing was not needed. The construction of the retaining wall was completed without permit and with the help of a neighbor from bordering property, John Mathie, who we hired to operate the tractor. At that time, it was not clear where the property line was. None of the properties in our neighborhood were giving information as to surveys at the point as, that they were sold. Mr. Mathie agreed this was not an issue and we have been friends with him for over thirty years. And he has constantly used our equipment for the excavation of his own land, the adjoining six acres, which for almost forty years he has used for storing salvage. Mr. Mathie has no residence there. While we were building the retaining wall, Mr. Mathie had the opportunity to speak to county code enforcer Estelle Maxwell favorably on our behalf. When the construction of the garage had begun, we were notified by the county of the necessity for a building permit, which was immediately applied for after the fact and hired an architect to help with proper planning. The architect led us to believe the construction was far enough from the property line and was depicted as such on the permit we had paid for. The permit was approved by the county. The discovery that four feet of the retaining wall buttress extends onto Mr. Mathie's land came after the construction. We are working with an engineer to rebuild and make sure our structure does not encroach on adjoining land, though it isn't possible for Mr. Mathie to build a structure there due to public utility easement rights as power lines are overhead. Also, our garage was discovered to be three feet from the property line where thirty feet would have been required. We want to comply with all county requirements, but also do not want to lose the investment we have put towards improving our property. We have never had the intent to go against county laws or to displease neighbors or encroach on the land of others. The county, through the permitting process, led us to believe we were putting our building in the right place. This endeavor to improve our land has been a costly investment and we wish to make it right.
I have a question. The gentleman who helped build this for you is the neighbor and it's on his land. Am I understanding that right?
Yeah, that four feet of the buttress of the retaining wall is.
That he helped build, or your property is on his land?
We hired him.
You hired him to do it?
To run the tractor.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
So you say that the county led you to believe through the permitting process that what you were doing was correct?
Yes, because at that time, the property line actually wasn't disclosed or discovered. There was no survey done until after.
The areas up there in the Colfax area are generally only identified on an assessor's map at this time. We don't have parcel maps for a lot of the properties up there because they were created prior to the subdivision map act. So it's not uncommon for us to take a property owner's representation of property lines as gospel until the inspector goes out in the field and confirms. So there wasn't a surveyed property line map in our offices. There's only the assessor's map that's created by the assessor's office, if that clarifies anything.
And so when was that permitting process? When did that take place? Was it two thousand nineteen?
That was after the initial complaint. And that would have been in.
Sorry.
Yeah, after the fact permits were issued in April of two thousand nineteen.
So, yeah, I'm sorry.
Who made the complaint or do we know that? Is it the person who helped build the wall? We don't know that.
So, I'm sorry, real quick. So we issued a permit in April of two thousand nineteen for this building?
Correct. We issued a permit for the, a grading permit for the retaining wall and a permit for the structure after the fact. And how it was depicted was depicted at thirty feet from the property line.
Because they didn't.
Yeah. Okay.
So I didn't add it in here, but it pretty much has this, just shifted up thirty feet.
If they did a lot line adjustment and the neighbor wanted to sell him a portion of their property, would the wall be in compliance the way it sits today?
We could potentially design it for that. The only concern, you'd have to take the full thirty feet in order for it to be, for the retaining wall to meet the nine foot requirement.
Right.
But that would be a potential remedy. But at this time, I don't believe that the neighbor's interested in that type of remedy for this.
I was just thinking out loud, since he helped build it, maybe he might sell you some property to help fix it, so.
We tried that. We, we tried.
I, I believe you. I just, I'm just trying to process it all. Thank you.
I guess, Adam, you know, when this is, has this happened in the past to your knowledge? And what have we done in the past when we've given a permit and after the fact realized that the property line wasn't discovered correctly? Has this been done before?
There are circumstances where we have had structures built similar to this. There was one recently. There was the Crowley, Crowley variance that was heard by the zoning administrator denied there. Also denied by your, your commission here. And then it went to the board. I wasn't the planner on that, so I don't know the circumstances in that one. But I know it was approved at the board at a five foot setback for a structure that they had built. And then there were some existing structures on their site that were approved at a ten foot setback and there were some canals there too. So this is not. The zoning administrator made his findings and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Adam, given the topography, whatever, the adjacent neighbor appears to the north, how close can they build to their property line?
The neighbor to the north could build, there's a thirty foot setback there. But as Mr. Sorensen noted, there is a power line that runs through there. And I'm not sure if there is an easement as he described because usually those easements are listed on parcel maps. And I don't have access to people's deeds or titles. But there is a power line that starts right here in the corner and stretches this way. You can kind of see a little bit of it here. And this would be the more level portion of the neighboring property. But it also slopes down and then it levels out down here where they had some, some storage as well.
Any other questions? Thinking about opening up for public comment. We can bring it back. Okay? Okay, thank you guys. We're going to open up for public comment. Is there anyone here in person that'd like to speak? Okay, please come up, sir. State your name for the record. You have three minutes.
I helped him, we were friends for twenty-five years. I helped him. He had a stolen backhoe that he said that I could borrow anytime I want. Then the co that came, he put that kibosh to that. I helped him. I got a friend of mine that's a contractor in construction. He did the wall. I helped him with his. Sven paid him to do the wall. When they put the wing wall in, it's on my property, I was not there. I was having some medical problems. Before the beginning here, he ever did this, I asked him to have it surveyed. I don't need it surveyed. On the top part of his property and my property, there's a pin up by the telephone pole. It's about that big with a metal post on it. It has the light, you can tell by standing up there where the property line is. So I asked him to have it surveyed. That was a denial. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
Let me see, I guess this might be a little bit kind of one of the surrounding issue, but not the issue. In a note from the property owner, he indicates that you used your property for storage?
I have, yes. I have some old cars that burned up and I'm in the process of clearing everything out. I lost everything on that property.
Okay. Yeah, so did you have some kind of a permit to do the storage?
I did not.
Okay.
But everything's gone. It's burnt, it was, it was such a hot fire, it burned everything. In the process of cleaning.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Any other people here? Anyone online? Okay, we'll close public comment and bring it back. You can bring up staff. Have a discussion.
Could you put the timeline chart up back, back up again, please? So there was a survey in September of two thousand twenty?
Correct. And that is in your, in your staff.
Right. And, and. Okay, and so that's how we determined these violations?
Because prior to the second complaint, the complaint originally in January of two thousand eighteen was only for, sorry. The complaint received in two thousand eighteen was only for the lack of building permit for the retaining wall and the shop. It was only identified that the setbacks were also a concern when we received the second complaint that highlighted the setbacks.
Okay, so after the fact permits, so we issued a building permit, what happens when a permit is issued?
For an after the fact permit?
Well, yeah, I guess so.
Usually an after the fact permit starts with the customer coming in and applying through the building department. They will provide a site plan and internal diagrams of the, of the structure. They will also have to provide letters from a, from a structural engineer, a contractor, an electrician, whatever it is type of work that was done, that will sign off on the work that was done in that construction. Then their application goes to planning. Then their application goes to planning. Planning reviews it for meeting setbacks in all of our zoning ordinances. Then it goes to, it runs the route. It goes to engineering and surveying to look at driveway and access. It goes to environmental health to look at septic locations. It goes to plan check. Eventually gets issued to the applicant.
Did I hear you right that the original complaint had nothing to do with the setback?
Correct.
So they thought it was thirty feet from the property line?
The original complaint did not mention a setback. It mentioned that the structure was built without the benefit of the permit and that they were concerned about the safety of the wall as well.
Interesting.
And complaining parties are usually not listed or directed to us, so we don't have that information.
So I guess I'm hearing that, that regardless of what we determine today, one issue is the wall has to be rebuilt to meet the current standard?
It would have to meet that zero-foot setback, or it would have to be accepted by engineering under their grading permit and meet whatever engineering standard is.
And so the current wall doesn't meet that, apparently?
Current wall does not. It would need to be redesigned to meet that zero. It could not be on the neighbor's property, period.
Okay.
The setback for the shop, for garage, sorry, could be approved at that three-foot, three-point-seventy-four if you decided to, but that's not the current recommendation.
But they'd still have to, on their property, they'd have to rebuild the wall?
It's up to their engineer that's designing that retaining wall. It wouldn't be allowed to extend. I don't know if that means they'd have to rebuild the whole thing. It's up to that engineer that they've hired to design that to not encroach into the neighbor's property and still be able to hold that structure as it is built.
So I guess I'm a little bit confused because there were permits issued for the wall in 2019. And so the county at that time felt that wall was up to standard?
We accepted plans and calculations on that wall. I don't believe that that grading permit that was reviewing that wall was ever finalized. So at the time, the plans that we received were accepted, but, and were issued. But with the changing of this retaining wall, so it doesn't extend into the neighbor's property, we would have to re-engineer and have that looked at again.
Okay, so the existing wall on their property could be okay, is what we're saying?
Possibly. It depends on if we can take off that four-foot, whatever, wing wall and have it still meet whatever engineering's looking for.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
If it's determined that, that, that the slope, it's necessary to have a wall on that slope, then could it extend into the neighbor's property, for example, you know, to protect erosion or landslides or, you know, engineering? And you'll probably answer this, but could it be determined that it's necessary to have a retaining wall for that area, regardless if there's a building there or not?
While a retaining wall is most likely required to build a, to put a pad in that area, I don't believe it's required to maintain soil on the site because as a natural slope, it hasn't been eroding more than, well, naturally. But to build their...
If you take it off, it's going to leave probably some kind of cliff. That's what I'm trying to...
Oh, if we were to remove the retaining wall?
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
If we remove the retaining wall, I'm assuming we'd also have to remove the structure and make sure that there's not going to be some erosion problems that follow.
Can you come up here?
If you removed the retaining wall, you'd have to have an engineer with a grading permit saying that the soil was stable without the wall there. So either way, it's going to have to be engineered. And currently, the preliminary grading plan that I looked at is they're taking the leg that kind of jogs over the property line and turning it back on to theirs. And with the grading ordinance, we like to have a two-feet buffer between the property line. So we're also asking you for it to get surveyed once we get to that point.
So no matter what we do with the wall, we still have to be able to approve the three-and-a-half-foot setback?
For the structure.
For the structure that's currently there. So if we approve that, do we...
And the wall would also still be too high within the set, or within the, from the property line, so it would also need to be a variance for the wall.
Okay. But I guess what I'm getting at is if we allow this to happen, and going back to what Commissioner Woodward said in the past, we're kind of setting a precedence to let other people build three-and-a-half feet from their property line without issuing a permit and coming back and asking for forgiveness? So...
It is your hearing body's determination that makes the day on this, and you can make a different determination on a different property if you wanted.
Yeah, I, what's good for one person should be good for all, so...
Consistency is important.
Right, hundred percent. Is it possible, I guess, can I ask the landowner, could they move this shop thirty feet? Is it on a concrete structure? Could it be picked up and moved probably cheaper than having this thing re-engineered and putting the wall up? We've moved properties and buildings before. I would imagine it's only seven hundred square feet. But I guess it's a question for the applicant.
Twelve hundred square feet.
Oh, sorry. No electrical, no plumbing.
Have you looked into the cost of moving? Would it be possible to lift it and move it, or is it complete tear-down?
Because the footings on it are made for that, the walls on the side.
Right.
So you'd have to move those footings all the way out. Yeah, it's not feasible. My age doesn't say that I can do that.
Well, I'm not asking you to do it. I'm just saying you can do it personally yourself. I'm just asking, is it, I'm just asking, is it feasible to do that? Trying to help you save your building.
No, it's not feasible to me.
Okay, thank you.
We're at discussion.
Get closer to your microphone.
Oh, sorry, I was talking to you. I guess I'm at a standstill because, you know, with what I'm hearing, the hired neighbor helped build this wall, and he deferred to somebody else. If he knew where the property line was, but still kind of agreed to help build it. It was built without a permit, which was, you know, wrong. I'm just thinking out loud, but I, I guess we just, I, with the county, and we're going to have to deny it. I can't see letting it go through and then giving somebody else the same permission to go do the same thing and come back and ask for forgiveness.
Can you change it to the approval? Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't have any information to make a different determination that was made by the zoning administrator.
Yeah, me either.
I, I, I just, I can't have any, I don't have any findings that would change that decision. I think we have the same information, same evidence. I didn't hear anything new. There's changes that need to happen, and I'm kind of at the point of going along with this recommendation.
I was, when I was looking at the, you know, this is pretty straightforward to me initially, you know. If you violate these guidelines and rules and that sort of thing, you face the consequences. If you get, you know, if you want to, I don't know whether caught is the right word, but if you get caught or if you're taking a task for it. But I was trying to understand if maybe the county was partially culpable here with the issuing, issuance of a building permit and that sort of thing. But I have to say, I don't think so. So, you know, I'm kind of where you guys are, it seems. And I really feel for these people. I really do, because, you know, this has been around since 2014, for crying out loud. It's just, it's really too bad.
So do you put up a fine for violating the permit process and still allow them to keep the structure and fix the wall?
No. It has to come into compliance, and that, that's kind of the process.
But we can allow a three-and-a-half-foot setback, and that's up to us then, right? So if we, if we allow that three-and-a-half-foot setback, and again, we go back to property to property, like Commissioner Woodward said, I think there's a lot of miscommunication that happened between a lot of people. This was approved, and then now it's denied, and, you know, I do feel sorry for the applicant as well. But if there is a way to help them keep this with less cost out of their pocket, I'm up for that suggestion. If the county would allow that to happen, I mean, if we approve a three-and-a-half-foot setback and we put that in our recommendation, even though they're denying...
So, yeah, what I would, what I would need to tell you is that if, if the commission decides to go down the route of approving this variance, it would be a tentative approval, and you would send back, staff back to prepare findings for approval. We would have to make that findings. Your commissions would have to make the findings for approval, and we would bring that back to the commission for you to take final action.
Okay.
What are the findings that are required again, EJ or Adam?
Do we have those listed in the staff report? I'll refer you to page nineteen in your staff report back.
Twenty.
Twenty? Okay, we all should have the same page. Right, right before the analysis, it says findings necessary for granting a variance. So first one, there are special circumstances applicable to the property, including size, shape, topography, location of surroundings, and because of such circumstances, the strict application of this chapter would deprive the property of privileges enjoyed by the, by other property in the vicinity and under identical zoning classification. The variance authorized does not constitute a grant of special privilege inconsistent with limitations upon other properties in the vicinity and in the same zone district. The variance does not authorize the use that is not otherwise allowed in the zoning district. Granting of the variance does not under the circumstances and conditions applied in this particular case adversely affect public health or safety. Is not materially detrimental to the public welfare nor injures to nearby property or improvements. The variance is consistent with Plasch County General Plan and any applicable community plan or specific plan. And lastly, the variance is the minimum departure from the requirements of this ordinance necessary to grant relief to the applicant, consistent with subsections A and B above. So that's what you would be asking the staff to come back with?
I guess I would be in tune to asking the staff to come back and help these people out.
I didn't hear you say that again.
I said I'd be in tune to what he's, you know, what is here is to do what we can to help them out and keep their structure, but also be in compliance with engineering and, you know, allow this three-and-a-half-foot setback, considering that there's nothing going to be built next to it if there's power lines. I think it was a mistake on a lot of people, including maybe the county, us, whoever. But I would recommend that we do what EJ was saying and have them come back to us with a ruling or something that gives us the proper engineering, lets them keep their structure, and we move forward.
You know, I guess, you know, I guess I kind of struggle with the coming back part of it all the time because, you know, the answer's got to be, is it going to change if they come back? Now, to me, it seems like if we were to support the staff recommendation here, and it sounds like, no matter what, something has to happen with the changes in the wall.
Right, correct.
And that work has to be done. Now, there would be a possibility, if those changes were made, that, and the the various items that we just heard, and we met, that they can go back to the zoning administrator and ask for a variance again. And that would be the comeback.
Okay.
You know, I, I think, I think the wall has to be dealt with.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah, and so that's what, that's what this finding is all about.
So this finding is the wall, but doesn't make them go tear down their structure, correct?
Well, it means that, it means that they, you can know that the wall needs to be fixed.
Right, then they can come back and apply for a variance for the three-and-a-half-foot.
Well, they could go back to the zoning administrator and see if the criteria can be met. Now, the zoning administrator initially said they couldn't. And so that's going to be an issue that they'd have to deal with.
There was, there was other buildable space on the property, et cetera, et cetera, so you would step down those lines. The building, the zoning administrator basically applied those guidelines to this, I think, entire project. We are affecting the entire project here. We are affecting not just the wall, but the building as well. Correct?
I think so.
Yeah, so this decision today affects both those aspects of this project.
I mean, a thing that we don't know is if they can't do the wall, then the building has, probably has to come down.
Correct.
So we don't know that, and I, I don't, I don't know if, that we have enough information to try to save the building.
The applicant has a question. Can we ask him?
I think we're at discussion. I mean...
Are there any issues with allowing the applicant to make another comment? That's, that's up to the chairman.
Yeah, would you like to hear something from the applicant?
I would like to hear.
Okay, yeah. Why don't you come up to the mic?
So what you're talking about is to move the wall. We've got an engineer working on it right now, where we're going to turn that one wing that goes on to the other property back into this site, and then we're going to put steel columns down alongside the wall, and then tie that wall back into the slab, tear that slab out, and repour that slab where there's cable running there where we can stress the cable against, into that wall. And then that should, that's, that's what my engineer is talking about right now, of how to do, how to fix that. The, the other question that you people have asked is if I could move the building forward more. Well, when you, if you move the building forward more, you actually put the building over the top of my septic. It's there. And that's mainly one of the reasons that we set it back so far, is so we weren't over the top of that septic and interfering with that.
So is part of the buildable area where the septic is?
I didn't get from environmental health a confirmation of where the septic field is, but that's the area that we identified, and then on his site plan, he showed the repair area being here. So there's a little bit of a distance here, but without getting tracings or something that tells us for sure where the repair areas is, we usually just take the applicant or the property owner's word for where septic lines are. And then they're compared with whatever environmental health has on record for where septic lines are. So I don't, I don't know for sure.
Question, the slab that you're removing, is that the slab that your garage sits on? You said you were going to remove a slab and then redo the slab?
At the back on the west side of the building. That's where that trailer's sitting. There's a concrete slab right there. We're going to, we'll remove that slab and then put the retaining wall in there and then re-put that concrete over there. And in other words, so the pins will come off the iron that's been set in the ground and pulled back into the slab. and pulled back into the slab and that, and then repour the slab. So in other words, you're getting pressure pulled back in, into the building to help it where you don't tip the wall over with the building. And that's just me talking with, 'cause I don't have an engineer degree, but that's what my engineer has talked to me about. And we're okay with that. Whatever I, whatever it takes me to fix it, that's what I'm gonna do. Short of taking the building down, just, I, I can't do that. Um, if you show them, show them that last view that you had. Show them where the septic is sitting.
Of course, it does want to work.
There it goes.
You need more? Yeah, keep going back.
That's the last one that I have.
Oh.
Do you want a site plan?
Yeah, the site.
Yeah, he wants a top view.
So how do you, that's the laser.
This is my house. The septic sits right about there. And the leach field goes out this, 'cause we missed the leach field down, drains down there.
So if, if we, uh, thank you. Okay, um, if we uphold the zoning administrator's decision, what kind of timeline do they have?
I just wanna make sure I'm hearing this right. So if you're, if you uphold the zoning administrator's decision to deny, to deny, uh, we have not put, I don't think, anything in the conditions of, of when everything has to be-
They can appeal.
Brought into conformance. There is, they, they can appeal. Yep, they have appeal rights.
To the board.
But the commission, just like we've done in the past, the commission could require removal of those structures or at least compliance with those structures within whatever, uh, period of time that you think is fit.
I have a question for the engineer. How long, if we gave them an extension of time, do you feel that they would need from an engineer and from start of construction to get to the point where they can save their wall and save their property?
As far as issuing the permit?
Correct. So if they go to step two today or whatever and say, okay, we got our engineering, we go to permitting or go to engineering and it gets approved, how long is this process? So if we wanna give them an extension of time, I'm trying to figure out on days what we can extend for them to get this done.
So a typical process for getting an engineer grading permit is they've already kind of been working on it a little bit, so I think they're a little bit ahead of schedule. Um, if they give us a complete packet where all the calculations and everything are correct and we feel good about the site plan, it could be done in three weeks, maybe four if we need some corrections. But after, if we need corrections, it's kinda just however long it takes them to get it back to us. Um, and then the process is, is once they give us the, the grading permit, we distribute it to planning and environmental health. So environmental health will look at that septic, make sure that everything's good there. Planning would then look at it for variance on the size of the wall within the setback.
Usually we wouldn't, usually we wouldn't, uh, approve those grading plans unless we had an approved variance as well. Because, so, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, thank you.
Yeah, so currently it's, we're, we haven't distributed anything for the grading permit because we're on hold to kind of see what goes here.
So the variance of the three-and-a-half feet will uphold all that, correct?
And the zero foot-
And the zero foot long.
Which is holding up the grading permit being issued. Because planning won't sign off on a grading permit being issued until we determine where the retaining wall can be for the structure. So usually, retaining for where it can be goes first, and then the engineering.
So- Kind of crossing each other's path, right? In your, in your opinion, what he stated from his engineer, do you feel, it might be just an educated guess, that would work?
I've talked to his engineer a couple of times, and I do feel that it'll work.
Okay, well, that's good to know.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Nope, thank you.
I was wondering where, uh, the zoning administrator identified it was a place the structure could be built within the, uh, setback. Where was that?
Uh, we believe that that could have been located, um, here. Uh, on the site plan, it, uh, this is the one that we were shown, and it did not show that there was a septic field there at this time. I'm sorry, that's news to me, as of today, that you had a septic field right here, 'cause it wasn't depicted on your site plan. I thought that this was your septic field down here, where we have trenches and we have a repair area identified. So-
It's over the septic system then, possibly?
If, if the septic system is here, as the applicant has described, then that would not be a buildable area.
Okay, so it'd have to ship further south or down?
They would have to ship further south, or they would have to, uh, build an even increased retaining wall down here to build on a more, uh, increased slope. Um, there were other places, but this was the most easily identifiable level location that they could have built and still met the thirty-foot setback.
Well, since it's already done.
I, I mean, well, we have to think about the neighbor and the setback that's expected from a neighbor or any future neighbor. And so I just, I don't, I can't, I don't have any new information for me to change the zoning administrator's original decision. Um, and I know we're trying to figure this out, but I, I don't know that we can. And so I, I'm feeling like I still need to go along with the zoning administrator's recommendation at this point. Allow them to appeal to the board of supervisors where they can figure it out. Uh, but, you know, I, I'm sorry, but I, I don't see a way that we can change that decision.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree. I mean, I think we, we wanna exercise, we wanna be able to exercise judgment. The zoning administrator applies that checklist, but we wanna, we, we are gonna try to apply some judgment to this. But at this point, I, I, uh, you know, this, this would be a special circumstance, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, you stepped down that checklist, and, uh, and I don't see justification for allowing this, uh, to proceed. So, that's my view anyway.
I, I don't know. I'm still trying to figure out how to help them. And if, if there was a way to recommend a change in the setback and extend time for the engineer's approval, considering that there's high-powered lines going next door to his property and buildings, uh, I don't know.
We kind of expect a neighbor approval. If that, you know, if we're gonna change a setback really close to someone else's property, we'd want, you know, the neighbor's blessing on that. It doesn't seem like we have that.
We certainly don't have it because of the wall.
Well, if the neighbor's here, we can always ask him, but then the neighbor, at the same time, I guess, got paid to help build that wall and knew where the property line was. All right. Well, I'm getting misinformation if somebody was told they hired somebody and they didn't hire somebody, so.
Yeah.
That's not for me to judge.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Yeah, I guess I'm ready to. I, I tried to help these people as much as possible, but I don't know if there's a way to do it. And they can appeal it, I guess, and we can bring it back and help them that way. Okay.
So I move that the planning commission uphold the decision of the zoning administrator to deny the variance supported by the findings stated in the staff report.
I'll second that.
First and the second?
I'd like to make a comment too on that. You know, that doesn't stop the process. It's just that, uh, you know, you have to look into this and, and come up with solutions, you know? If you, if it's, if the septic system is in this place, you know, it has to be on the map, or somebody has to know. And then, uh, also I'd take a serious look at where you could put the shop and not be right next to the property line. And, uh, you know, it depends on your analysis as, you know, the owners of the property and, uh, what you communicate with the planning department. You know, it doesn't prevent you from coming back if you have more information that supports the variance, and that would be a reason to come back. But it seems like right now, there's too many open-ended questions that are being dealt with. And so it's hard for, for me at any rate to, uh, disagree with the zoning administrator on this.
Good, good work. We have first and the second. Let's do a roll call vote.
We have a first from Mr. Woodward and a second from Mr. Demate. Mr. Hauge?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Demate?
Yes.
And Mr. Herzog?
Yes. Uh, the decision of the planning commission may be appealed by anyone who appeared at today's hearing and provided comment, or anyone that submitted written comments on this item. An appeal must be filed within ten days of today's date. It shall be accompanied by a filing fee of six hundred and forty-one dollars. I do, I do wanna, uh, thank my commissioners. I, I think, you know, we, we do our best to really think and read all the documents and take in public comment and really think about the best decision. And, and you guys put in a lot of work and talk to people, and, um, I, I wanna thank you guys 'cause you guys do a really good job. So thank you. We're gonna, uh, conclude this meeting. Meeting's adjourned.